Hey, Mike.
How are you? How's everyone?
Doing well, thanks. How are you?
Very well, thank you. Looks like everyone's coming in nicely and quickly here. Just a couple more folks to come in, it looks like.
Hi, everybody.
Bob, nice to see you again.
Good to see you, Joe. How you doing?
Good.
I love your background.
Well, we're just about there. I think we're just waiting for one or two more folks.
That never happens on a Zoom call.
Boy, very quick, very responsive group. Wow.
No one's ever waiting for anyone at a Zoom call.
I find it very depressing that when we had our Zoom meeting in April, was it for reconsideration of our February budget? I think we all thought then.
Right. It'll be a little while, but it won't be that long, right?
Oh, true.
Three months. I actually have a customer who's, I'll call him semi-pro furniture builder, and his main job is he's a dean at the University of Massachusetts Medical School specializing in infectious diseases. And he was in my shop in March picking something up. And I said, so, you know, this coronavirus, you know, give me the, give me the inside scoop on this. And he said, yeah, we'll have this under control by summer.
He didn't say which summer, though, right?
I think there was some hope that we'd have a little more cooperation along the way.
Joel, it looks like we have everyone, from what I can tell. Probably, there may be one or two, but I'll keep checking, but I think you're in a good spot to go ahead and tee off. Yeah, I think we're all in our places, sunshiny faces, so we can go forward. Tom, I'm gonna let you, if you'd like, open the meeting.
So I will call the, but the meeting of the Kennebunk Town Budget Board to order. And thank you all to the new members and the old members for taking the time to be here tonight. So thank you.
Exactly. Bob Fiore, thank you, and Dan Sayer, thank you. Just gonna jump right into it because this, this meeting can be rather lengthy. The current thought is who's gonna doze off first, so we'll keep it lively and keep it exciting, just as I always do. Okay, let's see, approve the minutes from January, February, and April. And if you will notice on the agenda itself, Tom, I indicated when you were absent, and the remaining four members can vote on these, are these minutes.
Of course, I left my agenda printed in the other spot, but maybe I have a copy here.
Any changes to the minutes? Basically, the selectmen have already signed off on these. This is a little bit of a foregone conclusion since we are now operating, and these minutes, and the budget was voted on, but nevertheless, any proposed changes?
So if everybody's comfortable, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented, all three day, all three meetings as presented.
Actually, we've got, we've got a total of six meetings.
I'm sorry, I take that back. All six meetings. I went down, didn't go down far enough. All six, six meetings unless someone has a particular change they want to consider.
And Tom, you were absent on February 1st and April 18th.
So yeah, so when it comes down to the voting, I'll abstain, but I can make a motion to approve them.
You don't want two separate motions for when you were and weren't there today?
I'll do it either way. I was just trying to keep it simple, so I'll make a motion on January 30th, February 4th, February 6th, and February 8th.
Second.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Hi.
Okay, those, those minutes are approved. I'll let someone else make the motion on the ones that I was absent at, the February 1st and 18th.
I move that we accept the minutes from the February 1st, 2020, and April 18th, 2020 meetings as presented here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, I should say discussion, but I don't think there is any discussion. All those opposed? None, and I'll abstain. So the minutes pass.
Great, thank you. Moving on to...
So the next one, yeah, select officers. So are there, we need a, we need a chairman and a, what do we need? Chairman, vice chairman, and secretary?
Exactly. If you, if you'd like, you can go to page 15 of the first handout that I sent out last night, the first PDF. First, page 15, I've just listed the members, Debbie Dawn, John, Bob, Dick, Dan, and Tom. Down below, you'll see Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, liaison to the Kennebunk Free Library, and liaison to RSU 21.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
I guess I'd like to know whether anyone is particularly keen to be the chair.
So...
So that Dan and Bob are where? Currently, we've got Tom Wellman is the Chair. Vice Chair, forgive me, is it John or is it Dawn? I believe it's...
I think it's John.
I don't know.
And I think Dawn is, is Secretary, currently.
Right, right.
Liaison to Kennebunk Free Library was, or is Dawn, and RSU 21 is John.
Okay, and so I don't, I don't mind continuing to be, be chairman, but I'm also not opposed to being a board member. So it's really up to you guys.
I believe in a prior year, I had nominated Deb. Deb, are you interested in serving?
Oh, to be honest, six is really tight. Like, I just screamed through the back door.
So...
I would hate to say yes, and then I'm late to every meeting.
Time constraints, okay. I mean, I, I have to say, six is tight for me also, so maybe the tail's wagging the dog here.
I mean, I'm gonna put you all on mute, and I'm gonna go off video, and I'm gonna eat my salad.
Would you be interested in serving Deb if we could have 6:30 meetings? Because I know 6:30 meetings would be easier for me as well.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, then, then I would like to nominate Deb Beal, and hopefully, if, well, hopefully we can take up the meeting time issue separately.
If not, I mean, it could take some creative scheduling at work, but I could make it work.
Do you have a nomination for Deb? Is there, Tom, you need a second?
Is there a second for Deb?
Don't think you need a second. Is that correct?
No seconds.
Right. Oh, my mistake.
Okay, so there are no other nominations? All those in favor of Deb for Chairman? Opposed? None. Deb, you may take over.
Tom, Tom, or Deb, I don't know whether anyone wants a point of order, but under the electronic version, technically, you're supposed to do a roll call vote. And I know that slows things down an awful lot, but that's the governor's requirement.
Okay, so Dan, are you in favor?
Aye.
See, John?
Aye.
Trying to go across here. Bob?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dan, Don? Dick?
Yes, sir, aye.
And Tom's an aye, so it's unanimous.
And Deb, you do have a hand in the attendees. If you, I don't know whether you wish to recognize the hand at this time or not.
So Zoom is new to me. I'm having a hard time finding anything.
Okay, but I can open that up if you'd like to have someone be able to speak that's an attendee.
Okay.
Rachel, you're, you're on.
Hi, thanks. And I, I'm very happy with that motion and action, but I was going to just ask if we could get a report of who of the tenure of the board members on the budget board in terms of making these positions. Often, seniority plays a role, and I'd like to know exactly how long each of the people have been on the budget board.
Unknown. At least four years? Maybe longer?
Well, perhaps everybody can say.
I don't have any idea. I don't have any idea, so...
This is my fourth.
This is Dan. Sorry, I've been on the budget board for 11 minutes.
And Bob Fiore, about 11 and a half minutes.
John Costin, I honestly don't know. I think since dirt.
What did you? I think it's been at least 12 years being the person who's does things when you're on the budget board. 12 or at least 12 years.
Tom just went into the ocean.
Mike and I just did a quick attempt to look this up, and we couldn't find anything that's written down. With respect to tenure, Dawn, I'd say you've been on the board for at least seven years, if not eight. Dick, of course, since you were one year. Tom, we, we brought you back, I think about four years ago. And Deb, you came on right after you left as selectman, if I believe.
Right, so I've had, I had eight as selectmen, and then I've been off the board for three and a half years.
Right, so who am I missing? And, and John, I, I'd have to say 10 years at least. Perhaps Rachel's correct at 12.
Don't forget, Tom.
Thank you.
So at this point, we're looking for a Vice Chair. Is that correct? I was interrupted by a selectman asking me when the budget board was meeting, so I took that call. So we're looking for a Vice Chair?
Yes, she's, she's muted. You're muted, Deb.
Does anybody want in? Any volunteers?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for John Costin.
John, do you accept?
Yes.
Okay. I don't need a second?
A second.
And now a roll call vote, please?
Okay. Beal in favor? Tom?
Yes.
Dan, sorry.
Aye, yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Aye.
Dawn? Bob?
Yes.
Okay. Get everyone?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Seven zero. Dexter, Secretary?
Any volunteers?
I'd love to be Secretary.
All right, Tom.
I'll nominate Tom Wellman as Secretary.
Second.
Okay. All in favor. Dan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dawn? Dick?
Aye.
And I'll say aye. Okay, seven oh.
Seven zero, very good. And then for liaison to the Kennebunk Free Library, we know that Bob Fiore is already a trustee, so maybe that's a, that's a good fit, or I leave it to the board as to whether or not that is a conflict, but Bob is certainly well versed in what's going on at the library.
I'll make a nomination. We appoint Bob as the liaison to the library.
Second.
All right, roll call. Dan?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Aye.
Dawn? Bob?
Yes.
And Beal's a yes, so seven oh.
And last but certainly not least, RSU 21 liaison. As I mentioned before, John Costin is currently the liaison.
John, you want to continue?
Um, well, Rachel has, has served her time and been freed. I would do it if anyone else wants to, but I would happily turn it over to anyone else who's interested.
Anybody have any interest?
No, it's time.
I, this is Dan, I'm interested.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion. We appoint Dan as the liaison to the school board.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Dan?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dick?
Aye.
Dawn? Bob?
Yes.
And Beal's a yes, so seven oh.
All right, very good, thank you. Moving on, next item is, let me see, item, article four, rather, and four. Review fiscal year 1920 preliminary unaudited budget versus actual, and then also first quarter of 2021. Turning to your, the information that I sent out last night, PDF, first PDF, page 16, I've listed out both last year as well as the first quarter. A lot of information there. I've broken it down by each of the various categories, various items, various departments that we vote on during the course of the budget meetings. What I'd like you to focus in on is right in the middle of the page for fiscal year 1920. There was a lot of doom and gloom, particularly by me, back in April, May, June timeframe. And I'm, I'm very pleased to say that that has not come to fruition. If you look on row 43, you'll see that we've underspent our operating budgets by approximately 2%. And that's, that's quite normal. What we look at is a 3% to 1% under budget spending year after year. So two falls right in the middle of that. What's most interesting is line 45, and that's the revenue. And we can actually go to the next page, page 17, and you can see the breakdown. We're basically 9% over on our revenue, which is pretty darn amazing. Our collections, and I'll get to that in just a second, are still, are coming in still for fiscal year 1920. Very strong, looking at roughly 98% on that at this point, which is fantastic. We'll hit probably 99 in the next couple of months. As we go through more of the year and do a little stronger collections on last year's property taxes. Recently, we, we collected on a very substantial property that was in arrears for a number of years here in town. So that's been cleared up. We're clearing up a number of other properties as well, so that's, that's moving forward. Really, the, the highlight there is row 10, column V, and you'll see the auto excise, which I, I predicted was going to be 95%, and it's right now at 111%. Continued, it was very strong, and you can go right down the line and see that other items came in equally as strong. Even our beach parking permits came at 103. I was predicting, I think I was looking at 90%, so it was, it was a good early summer for us after all. Residents came in and they, they bought plenty of beach passes. So that is great news. So for fiscal year 18, 19, 19 and 20 is coming in quite well. First quarter of this year is again coming in very strong. Our collections for our taxes for our first payment of the year, if you go to page 18, you'll see some comparison between last year's collections on the same date as this year. Last year, 49, I mean, last, this year, 49.8%. This year, 48.8%. Again, I was, I was Mr. Doom and Gloom. I thought it was going to be a very, a very weak first, first half of the year. It's coming in very strong, so stronger than last year. Again, good news. Turning the next page, you'll see our auto excise tax were basically $224,000 ahead of last year. I just updated that for October, and we're now roughly $273,000 above last year, 33% better than last year. I'm hearing reports from the front office that new car purchases are very, continue to be very strong. And we're looking at the high end of automobiles. Next page, page 20, ambulance billing is, is more in alignment with what I expected. That is, in fact, coming in at around 90%, and that's directly COVID-19 related. Fewer runs, fewer, fewer collections, slower collections, and again, my number's on a cash basis. Cash basis typically runs anywhere from two to four months behind, so again, expectation, we're looking at summer collections, numbers are starting to pick up. Updated those numbers for, for October as well. October's starting to bounce back. I have no idea what the surge is gonna hit us with in the coming months. Well, it does have to play each month as it comes forward. So going back to page 16, all of the numbers are coming in alignment. We're looking, we do front load some of our expenses, such as insurances are paid on the front end with respect to our PNC. Many of our software licenses are paid upfront. That, that ways are spending a little bit on the, on the front side. So if you look on line 43, column K, you'll see that we're, we're about 30% of spending after three months. Should be more like 25%, but given those things I mentioned, the front end, front end loading, 30% is not unreasonable. And again, revenues coming in very strong. Any questions with respect to where we are last year as well as the first quarter of this year? Seeing none? Shall we click forward to the next agenda item, which is, forgive me? We're gonna go right to our, our...
Excuse me, Joel, can I interrupt you for just a second, but I'm, I'm hearing from the other room that Rachel has her hand raised.
I, I don't have control of that, so I have to...
So, so are we gonna take questions through this from the outside? Are, are we taking public comment? Is that part of this?
Historically, we haven't.
Where's Deb? I didn't want everybody seeing me eat my salad, Rachel. Turn the camera off.
Mike, can you hear me now? Yes, okay. I, I don't believe I'm from the outside, Tom. Not from the outside, right from the town of Kennebunk.
So Rachel, Rachel, that wasn't the point. The point, I thought this was a budget committee, and we were in the middle of a presentation, and I didn't know we were opening this up to public comment.
I just, I just read the agenda, and it gave very clear instructions for how the public should comment if they wanted to, and it was to raise their hand and be called on. I just wanted to say that I think that it's not, it's not a surprise that Kennebunk is in the, the up angle of the K recovery that I'm sure everyone in the budget board and town has heard about. And while we might be doing very well with our collections and that we're doing okay with our budget currently, there is another line on that K that's going down pretty drastically and dramatically. And I think that as a town, we need to be thinking about our budget moving forward of how we're going to support and protect our town citizens that are on the bottom leg of that K recovery. Thank you.
So shall we move forward with the presentations from the various division and department heads at this point? I'm seeing some head nod, so I will, I will direct you, request that you flip to page 29. What I've done is broken this into two pieces. I sent you the first PDF. What I've done is broken this into two pieces, I sent you of the first PDF, that's basically, we've gone over a good portion of that. The second PDF uh contained a summary of the uh items being requested. That's on page thirty and thirty-one, and then we have uh some of the roads that have been uh brought forward by Chris Ostreiter on page thirty-two, and there was, then there's supporting documentation that goes forward from uh page thirty-three to page seventy-six. What I can do is perhaps, if you'd like, I could read through, or we could uh just look at page thirty, start with page thirty. Let me see if we got uh, yes, there's Bob McKenzie right in the middle of my screen, so Bob can go through this, or, or I can go through it, I, I, uh, your choice. So hearing nothing, I will uh keep this moving. And actually, I think I'll, I'll turn it over to Bob since my throat's a little dry, uh, he's got five items there, and uh listed in priority, so Bob, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, so as Joel stated, I do have five items to bring forward to you this evening, I will go into order of priority. Number one would be our police cruisers, we are looking to replace two of our frontline police cars. One is a two thousand sixteen Ford SUV with the mileage would be at approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand at the time of decommission. The second car would be uh two thousand and fourteen, uh with about a hundred and fifteen thousand miles at the time of decommission. Asking for the total of a hundred and one eight, uh what that would consist of is obviously two cars. Uh, we are looking at the hybrids, which are right around uh thirty-eight currently. Expect that may rise some by next year when we actually would be buying these vehicles. In addition, uh, we're still in that phase where we, when we buy a new car, we have to outfit them because of the change in the vehicle make. Over the years, the systems that we have to go in do not fit, so we need a prisoner containment system. Center console, which is uh, you know, law enforcement specific, uh lights, siren, uh striping, um, and in the, in the sense, since we would need two radios also. Uh, so I can either take questions now or go through my five items and ask questions at the end.
I, I do have a question, and I don't care um when I ask it, Chief McKenzie, would you rather now or later?
Sure.
Okay, um, my memory is that in our last uh budget cycle there were two additional cruisers um that essentially supported uh the school resource officers, and those were purchased, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's kind of a, not exactly a question, I guess, because it has so many prongs, it's more of an exploration. Uh, I'm curious what happened with the school resource officers when the schools were closed? Um, and then um, you know, I'm sure you're aware that uh, the national conversation on school resource officers has kind of caught up to where we've been at for a couple of years here in Kennybunk. And there was like significant um showing at the school budget meeting last spring of people who wanted to discontinue that program. So I am curious, you know, what would happen to our extra vehicles if the school district were to decide to um bring that, cut that program back to uh high school and um middle school as it had been in prior years in their current budget cycle. So I guess that's, I guess that's two well-defined questions for you. One is what did the school resource officers do while the schools were closed? Uh, and what will they do um if and when the, the schools close again, and what would we do with the vehicles if the school district were to scale back that program?
Okay, so first of all, with the last shutdown of the schools, the uh SROs did go back into our rotation and assisted the uh, our patrol division. So what we did was we split them up over our shifts, um, one on each shift, and we utilize that to uh save on overtime uh for us. Going forward, that is a topic of discussion now that we are in with the superintendent and school staff. Um, so that is under consideration now. I don't have any final um anything final from the superintendent as of yet, but um they are, uh, should be getting back to us anytime with what they've, um, what they are looking at and to see if that would work with us, so there would be more to come on that. If we didn't have school resource officers anymore, those, those cars would obviously go back into our patrol fleet. Um, as it stands now, what we do when we buy a new car, those cars are actually put in patrol, the, the older cars are actually utilized by the SROs because that, the mileage obviously does not get up there. So we give the SROs the cars with the highest mileage to go to the schools back and forth and any duties that they need to do. And then those cars are also utilized at times when we um have additional details or whatnot that go on through town. Uh, so, but if the SRO program were to go away for some reason, then again, those cars would be utilized in patrol. Uh, you'd probably see a time period where we would not have to order some cars moving forward in this budget process, because we'd have enough cars um, uh, you know, to, to take us through a few years. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, Chief McKenzie, this is Dan, um, I'm just curious whether um you do life cycle costing or life cycle estimating on your vehicles? And if so, is the replacement of these two vehicles at their, at or before or beyond their estimated service life?
Certainly, that's, that's a great question. So these cars typically for us do have a mileage anywhere between a hundred and a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles when we decommission them. And what we find once in a while, those cars are able to, able to be utilized by maybe another department, um, such as code enforcement or something like that. They are not suited for um patrol use anymore, because obviously sometimes the officers do have to respond to emergency situation with lights and sirens operating over the speed limit, so we need to make sure that they are safe. So I can, I can see Dan Robinson is here, and I would, I've told him before, use him as exhibit A, he has been and I'm not gonna say the fortunate or unfortunate um uh user of those cars once they get decommissioned from the police department, and it's, it's never a, a good conversation that we have, um, because they're, they're tired, so.
And that's.
In addition to mileage, they also have hours on the, on the motors themselves, they've run and they run and they've run, especially in the uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, chief, but typically in the wintertime, the cars have to stay warm because of all the electronics that they're carrying, so. And in fact, when I first started, we were looking at a three to four-year rotation, we're up to five to seven years at this point on, on frontline automobiles, so we've extended, we've pushed the life on these uh cars pretty, pretty, pretty well. Chris Ostreiter can also attest and listen to Paul DeMers's uh laments on uh hand-me-downs as well, so we have to be careful on that, so.
Thank you. Certainly, any other questions on the cars? Okay, moving on to number two, is to replace twenty of our portable radios, and you, I know I did have an image that was sent out, you probably see that. It hits a handheld portable radio that is utilized by each and every officer. They all have portable radios assigned to them, and these radios would replace the current ones that we have that are about ten to twelve years of age. We have started to have issues with um many of the portables, and we've had some refurbished. Um, but it's, it's time that we replace them, because obviously the portable radios are, you know, essential to the police officers to have on them, we need to make sure that those are in proper working uh in good condition. Any questions on radios? Okay, number three is an accident uh reconstruction tool, it's, I've got here, it's, is, one brand is called a total station. What have, what this device, or it's not, it's more than a device, it's used to map accident scenes. These accident scenes are when you have a fatal motor vehicle accident or a serious personal injury motor vehicle accident. We are required to investigate those with an accident reconstructionist, that's somebody that is trained, uh highly skilled. Um, a lot of, lot of math and algebra, it's a science, it's truly a science. And this is what that reconstructionist needs. Now, there are, there are not many accident reconstructions, uh reconstructionists, um, throughout the state of Maine, there are, I think, two in York County. We are fortunate enough to have on our staff an accident reconstructionist, that is a part-time officer that was previously a full-time uh game warden. And this warden came out several times for us to reconstruct uh crashes. Um, he was able, at that time, the warden service uh had those tools that he was able to utilize, so we were able to utilize those tools at that time. He has just recently retired from the main warden service. Um, although he is still an active officer with our police department and wants to maintain his employment with us, and especially in the reconstruction field. Um, so therefore, because he doesn't have access to those uh, that, the equipment anymore, he's requested if we could purchase these items. I have asked him to look for any grants, I'm not aware of any currently, but obviously in between now and budget time, e- even if this approved, if there were grants that would come forward, then obviously we wouldn't need to purchase them. But at this point, we, I don't have any grant funds. Um, I'd like to purchase this for this, uh, for the officer, for our department. And what this would also do, it, it is um drone-based as well. Um, when you utilize uh this type of system at an accident scene, typically when you don't have this type of system, and you have to do um, when I say the old-school type way, it takes several hours to clear an accident scene, several hours. And obviously, that can be uh really bad for, you know, the rest of the community in public. Um, something like this, uh, we are able to clear up a crash scene much quicker, it literally is a matter of minutes. Once you send something like this up in the air, do, do the measurements and bat down, you can clear the scene very, very quickly. So on that, I will take any questions?
He felt, how frequently um has this been used by the uh warden, the, the one that's borrowed?
Certainly, so uh, the warden service uses it quite often, because they would obviously travel throughout, um, he would actually travel probably throughout the state to do, to do this. The last time that we needed a reconstruction was this past summer, where we had a uh, a pretty bad motor vehicle crash on Route One, it was a stolen vehicle, it was a car chase out of Wells that came into town, and um real serious, and that's the last time that we had utilized one. Typically, we need this in Kennybunk two to four times a year. So it's not, you know, thankfully, it's not all that often, but, you know, I also, obviously do not have an issue with it being utilized if he were to do a reconstruction of Wells. He needs a total of twelve reconstructions anyway to maintain a certification. Um, so I would, I would want him, the more he does it, the better he is, um, but also it's, uh, you know, it's, we're able to assist other agencies too when it's needed. Any other?
So how, how many, uh, do any other towns have any of this? In York County, so we would be the only ones in York County that would have one?
To my knowledge, yes, um, unless that other one reconstructionist, I'm not sure if they have one or not, I'm not sure where they're from.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
Bedford had one.
Bedford, yes, I think, you, you, I think you could be right, I think Bob Flint over there is a reconstructionist. Yep. Any other questions? Number four on my list is uh five radar units, these are, I say, speed measuring devices, they're known, commonly known as radar units. Uh, the ones that we have are about seventeen years of age, and they are retired, and we've started to have issues with them, and it's time for them to be replaced, so I've asked for thirteen thousand to replace five of these radar units.
So how fast will you wanna pay for those collect, uh, tracking me on McGuire Road?
The last item I have on the list is additional uh electronic speed signs that you may have seen in different areas around town. Um, Summer Street has had it, High Street um has had it. A few other roads have had it, these are small signs or solar power that we have on posts uh that warn an operator, if they're operating above the posted speed limit, they, they flash uh similar to our speed trailers, but these are just small devices that we can put on a post. And in confirm with our traffic safety officer, um, he had requested in, at this budget time, if we could purchase a couple of more of these, because he does find them useful, uh, we do have a lot of requests for them um around town, which I knew we would at some point, once we started to introduce these in our community. I think they do help, um, I've heard people telling me that it, it certainly it has shocked them when they've come around a corner and also starts flashing, it reminds them to slow down. So it's just another tool for you to like, to, for us to utilize to help our traffic enforcement efforts and compliance. Any questions on that? Hearing none, I will mute.
Next up, if uh, Chief Row, if you could uh take over for with respect to fire rescue, leading off with uh ten uh AED replacements for twenty thousand dollars?
Yes, good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay? All right, so fire rescue this year, uh, the priorities are listed on your paperwork there, the AEDs are uh uh, page forty-three, I believe, is that's the uh, the look-up on it. Uh, we have over twenty of these devices in the, in the, in the public safety sector, uh, between police, fire, waterhouse, and town hall, things like that. Uh, they are um, they are at the end of their life, I've said before that um the F, FDA looks at these as a lifespan of seven years, and then the companies do not uh supply parts past ten. These units that we're using now uh have been upgraded to the most recent software, and that's as far as we can go with it. Again, the estimated life is seven to ten years, and uh, we're looking for twenty, uh, ten of those, and we'll probably be back next year looking for another ten. These are carried in all of the fire vehicles and uh obviously in the police vehicles and things like that. These ten would be distributed around with the oldest units that we have. Number two is a power load device, uh, it is a device that fits into an ambulance that reaches out and grabs the stretcher and lifts it up and loads it into the back of the ambulance. These, this is a, a match set uh with the stretcher and the load device. Uh, it's something that MMA has recommended us for years to have, we have them now, this is a replacement of one in the, in the ambulance that is, again, beyond, beyond its life age. It's just the lifting device and not the stretcher, so it's half of the system. And that is uh page, page forty-four on your look-up. The next device that we have there are the Knox boxes, uh, we've, a Knox box is a key control system where we mount boxes that are purchased by the consumer or the customer, and they put on their building or their home, and that box is a small vault. And inside that box is a, is a key to their house or property. The actual key to the box is electronically captured in all of the vehicles that we have, or uh, a number of the vehicles that we have, I think we have twelve right now. And it's a two, it's a two-part system, because we're in the middle of replacement, our older system, we had to call dispatch and, and tell them who we were, and then. and then, uh, the vehicle that we were in and have a key release for what purpose? And they would, they would send a, a DTMF code, which is like what you hear when you dial it, when you, uh, push button your phone and it would release the key. The newer boxes have a, have a computer audit trail that, uh, we don't necessarily have to call dispatch, but we have a policy where we do anyway, so we can track the key. Once that key is released, one key will fit any Knox box in our community. We have close to three hundred of those now. And the firefighter isn't, and EMS personnel and also the police supervisor have, have that key to get into a building for emergency purposes. Uh, we've had the system since nineteen ninety-five. It's worked well for us. Uh, but the older key capture devices in the vehicles are getting to the point where they're failing. Uh, like I said, we had twelve, we're trying to buy eight. The four that we've already replaced are replaced because they've broken and that puts it, the unit out of service and they no longer can repair them. Uh, so we're, we're asking to finish up the budgeting for the, for the remaining eight units in the department. Hopefully that will carry us well into the future. Number four, and that's on page forty-six of your handout, is the ladder truck. And we've talked about this several times, leading up to the, up to the infamous date that we have to, uh, consider replacing it. Uh, our current truck will be thirty-three years old this year. Uh, NFPA, National Fire Protection Association says the truck, truck should be traded at twenty-five years plus or minus. Uh, in two thousand and four, I believe it was, the town put a hundred and forty thousand dollars into that truck to refurb it. And that's why it's gone much longer than the, than the regular number of years. This, uh, we, we put in for a assistance to firefight a grant application last year for one point two million to replace this on, on the FEMA, on the FEMA grant process. We were unsuccessful with that. Since then, we've talked, uh, we've talked with the grant writer and the dollar per catheter was not correct for our community. Uh, this budget is an estimate. I've not, uh, done, uh, exact homework on the price. Uh, we have been looking at ladders here and there, but, uh, it would take a little bit of work, but it's going to be in the ballpark of unfortunately a million dollars. Uh, this truck, this truck will serve us for another twenty-five or thirty years. So I'll stop there because that is a, is a big, uh, item. Uh, initially, uh, we were looking at perhaps putting in a ladder in an AFP grant again this year, but when we talked with our grant writer, they said you, there were four trucks awarded in the New England area and, uh, there's very little likelihood that Kennybunk would receive a vehicle of that magnitude. So what, what I considered initially was, uh, putting the ladder truck off and going out to bid again. Since that time, the grant writer has talked about some other items in the fight department that could be replaced. And one of those was the brush truck, uh, the brush tanker truck that's up at Blueberry Plains. And that truck there is thirty-five years, thirty-five years old, nineteen eighty. Uh, and so we were looking to, he thought the likelihood of getting that on a grant basis might work better. I would ask that you look at these two vehicles. If you don't think the financial atmosphere is such that we can do the ladder truck this year, then we can plug in the, the tanker brush truck and that would be probably two fifty to three hundred. Uh, we've pulled that brush truck out of the budgets in the past simply because it's not a high priority vehicle. The ladder truck is getting to the point where it is high priority because of its age. We do maintain it through our public services mechanics. They do a great job. The ladder is tested every year and every year we, we, uh, repair the grocery list of things that are wrong with the truck. So they're not, haven't been huge yet, but every year we do that. So that's what that is. Any, any questions on the ladder truck and that process? Okay, the next item on the list is an epoxy, uh, floor coating and that's page forty-seven in your items. Uh, central fire station, when we get up to the right. Central fire station and all of our fire stations except Blueberry Plains have an epoxy floor coating that protects the concrete, uh, from wear and tear and water and oil. Uh, and in some cases it has an anti-slip coating in it. It also, uh, has, uh, driving lanes in the, in the station, so it allows for proper alignment of the vehicles and it assists our drivers in backing in. The floor at central station was done in two thousand and four and in meeting with some of the representatives on, on getting prices for this project, they said that, that floor has served long beyond its life expectancy. It is showing some signs of wear and tear underneath, uh, our busier vehicles. And then the other factor that comes into play is in the last two years, we've taken on some projects at central station that have caused, um, concrete work in the station. One of them was the removal of the kitchen, uh, which was probably four years ago. So that leaves a, uh, an area of bare concrete. And then in the, in the last CIP budget that we approved, uh, we did floor drains in the central station. And that was, that's a, uh, front, front to rear trench drain that runs in, in between two of the bays and then a, a trench drain that runs three quarters of the way to the, to the station between the other two vehicles. And that, uh, was an extensive project that, uh, had contracted, came in and cut out like a six-foot wide piece of concrete, probably fifty feet long and then replaced it with drain. So that's another, uh, bare set of concrete exposed there. And, and this coating would preserve it. It would keep our, its, uh, water wicking capabilities to a minimum and, and make the floor last longer as well as the anti-slip. So that was, that's a thirty thousand dollar project there. Um, the next item is AV, uh, upgrade equipment at West Kennybunk. That's number forty-nine in your pages. That's a five thousand dollar project to, uh, it's a carryover from last year's CIP where, uh, wasn't a huge priority. The West Kennybunk Station has a training facility in it, a training room. It's probably a little bit larger than the regular selectman's meeting room with the additional room where the customer sits. Uh, right now it's equipped with a, with a projector and a computer screen and things like that. This would bring in some more up-to-date computer equipment uh, for both the students in the back of the classroom and the instructor to see. This building is used by police, fire, public services, uh, code enforcement has used it. Uh, the main state fire marshal uses it. The solid fuels technician uses it. York County, uh, York County EMA and the York County Chiefs Association use it to host classes and things like that. So the building is used, uh, quite a bit and this would just, uh, upgrade and on buy some new technology for that particular facility. Uh, the next item on the list is Emergency Operations Center, which is forty-nine on your, uh, workbooks. Uh, this is a, another carryover from last year. As we move forward and, and work together more smoothly during storms and emergencies, we've, we've found the need for a place to meet and coordinate some of this activity during emergencies such as snowstorms and, and flooding and things like that. Right now, the central fire station has a small room that used to be their training room that we're kind of using it now for that. This particular money would, would bring in some more technology, telephone equipment, radio connections where each of the top agencies that come in there and operate, would have, uh, direct contact with their folks out on the street via radio connection and telephone connections from their incoming lines. There'd also be direct, uh, feeds to dispatch and the capability to talk on, on the regular radio in the dispatch room. And also it would upgrade some of the AV equipment so we could, we could see what's going on out in the, in the field and some applications and also, uh, watch weather channel tracking and things like that. And there, with the advent of Zoom, as we're appreciating it during this COVID time, there are other opportunities to connect in with the county EOC, which would assist us in that operation. Uh, the next item on the list is six, uh, portable radios. That is item number fifty on your sheet. These are, um, portable radios that would be assigned to specific apparatus and left in the trucks. The, the, uh, the need for this particular radio as we get more and more busy on our primary frequency, which is recorded at Sanford Communications, we've been jumping onto our, our secondary and onto our direct radio channels to operate on emergency scenes. The only channel that's recorded is done through dispatch and that's at channel one. These portable radios, the technology has come up to date so that they have a, a small SD card in them. And so no matter which channel that we would operate, those portables, whichever one showed up on the scene would be turned to that operational frequency and there would be the ability to record everything that's said at the fire ground. Uh, and that, that could be valuable in, in any liabilities or lawsuits and things like that. It could also be used as training later on. Uh, because in the past, when we do hot washing or we do after-action reports, we request the recordings from dispatch and that, that's from channel one. They don't have the ability to do that for channels, uh, three, four and five. So those are portable similar to what, uh, Chief McKenzie is requesting. Um, the next item on the list is on page fifty-one of your handouts. It's a fire ground communication headset. This is new technology, uh, that we're using it now in the operations of the trucks as far as headsets go. When we're operating trucks at the fire scene, you wear a headset and it ties in Bluetooth-wise to the radio in the truck so that with the, with the engine roar and all that, it gives you decibel protection for ear protection. Plus it gives you the ability to talk to other radios in the network. Uh, presently, we have three vehicles that are equipped with those devices. This is a portable unit that contains four of these headsets. It can be used in an emergency scene where a team of people, uh, let's just use a auto extrication application where everyone has that on and the talk between the team members is, is not impeded by the fire ground noise. Um, the other application that it could be used at is training. When we're teaching people how to operate pumps and ladder trucks and things like that, these devices could be put on and worn by the instructor as well as for the students and the conversation to be carried on at both a safe noise level and a, and a level where the instructors aren't yelling and the students are receiving that information much better. And that's a seventy-five hundred dollar project. Uh, again, they can be, they are capable of being folded into the, uh, communications devices that we have now, both with, uh, radio and Bluetooth. So that's it for fire and rescue. Uh, any questions on that before I move forward into the lifeguards?
Yeah, Chief Row, a real quick question on these headsets. Um, I'm assume, uh, I would assume they're compatible with the protective gear that firefighters would be wearing on the scene? Is that correct?
Yes, you are correct. Uh, normal, uh, if you wear ear protection, oftentimes you'll see that the, the metal device goes over the head. Uh, these particular headphones have just a cloth strip that's adjustable for height and then the metal band that manages the, uh, unit as a whole goes behind the head under the rim of the helmet. And then there's a microphone boom that comes up.
Chief Row, um, just to take you back to the AEDs, um, do you have any idea of approximately how many times a year those are employed, the ones we have already?
Uh, I do not have that with me tonight, but I can, uh, see if we can get up that, uh, information. Yeah, that's all I can say. I know, I know of police officers and, and firefighters and EMS folks that don't show up on an ambulance will take those units into their house because it's vital right off of that. But I will look to see if we can get that number for you.
That'd be great. I mean, I, I know that, you know, so much of, uh, the equipment, the training that, that you do, you, you can't, uh, really put a, a price or cost on, well, you know, the, the, the one time or the few times that we need that. But my belief is that that's a piece of equipment that's used fairly often and I think it would probably be, uh, good for residents to know like, hey, when we make this investment, you know, this is how many times a year, you know, we may be saving individuals' lives. It's probably pretty dramatic.
Yep, there are, these units are in the town hall now on the, on the sec, on the auditorium level. Uh, there's also one at the waterhouse. Uh, I know the Rotary Club has bought some and put around town. Uh, we've got a grant to replace, uh, several in some churches and then the school has AEDs around. And in the medical community, what we've found is the earlier we can get to someone and do a cardio conversion of their heart rate and put them back in normal sinus rhythm, the better off, uh, chances of survival are. And these, these are instrumental in that use. They're very simple to use. I don't know if you folks have, have ever seen one, but, uh, pardon me for, for going through this. You open the device up, it, it talks to you. It tells you to take the two pads and where to place them on the chest. And it tells you to push a button to evaluate the person's heart rate at the time. And then it tells you whether it's a shockable rhythm or not. And if it is a shockable rhythm, it will tell you to stand back. Remember emergency where everybody stood back before they did the defend? This will tell you to stand back, it will administer a shock and then you hit another button to do an evaluation to see if that heart rate has come back into normal sinus rhythm.
I was gonna say, Chief, probably a couple of years ago, the whole family and I came down and we did a CPR and we were given a brief overview of the AED, uh, equipment. Is that something that we could record and have available to the public?
Record the classes or?
Well, at least record how to use the AED so that they would be, you know, maybe like a ten-minute video if you ever had to, that citizens could go online and just take a look at it at the website somewhere? Because they are becoming more and more common.
That is certainly something I can ask. We are a training center for the American Heart Association. So we teach by pretty strict guidelines on what we can and can't do. Uh, I know YouTube and out on the internet, that, that stuff is probably out there. We just have to be careful not to teach the citizens step one through five when they need steps one through ten. Uh, because there's some liability. Well, Kennybunk Fire Rescue had this on their website and told me how to do, yeah, using AED. So it's a great idea. Let me check into, uh, see if, uh, if we can teach, if we put, put out like a, uh, an introduction to the AED. With that, our dispatch center in Sanford, through what they call EMB, Emergency Medical Dispatching, when, when a customer calls and there is a hot problem, that's one of the questions that they ask if there's an AED and they will assist them through that. You know, we, we tried, last year I tried, uh, I wanted to introduce a program where we put some more of these up in public places and it just, it wasn't the budget for it. And, uh, so this year I didn't ask for that again simply because we need to replace the ones that are vital to us in our vehicles. You know, there's, there's one in the vehicle that I'm assigned to, the Assistant Chief. There's one in the utility vehicles, there's one in the lifeguard vehicles as well as the engines. The ambulances do not have these devices because they have the next level up machine, uh, which is, which we'll talk about in the next couple of years, which are thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a piece. So I hope that answers your question.
It does, and the only other thing I would add is I worked in my current building for six months before I knew there were two AEDs in the building. Can we also put a link to where they are located in town so that we can become familiar with them?
Uh, there is, there is software out there nationally somewhere that, uh, that you have to subscribe to it. I don't know how it works, but if nothing else, we could maybe post this on our website with permission about those locations. This, that, that might be a good idea because, uh, they are very, they are very helpful and, and if there's two people there and, and, and working on one person, then that one important job would be to go get that AED and get that heart rate back into normal sinus rhythm if that's possible. So that is an important piece of equipment.
I mean, to me, it's almost like carrying Narcan. The more you can have, the more you know, the better off you're gonna be.
Excuse me, I'm just making a few notes. Any, anything else on the fire rescue side of the house?
Chief, one quick question about the, um, training room upgrades.
Yes.
Is there any practice of making resources like that available to other towns that might not have equivalent facilities? And if so, uh, does, would the town be in a position to charge for that use?
Um, yes, other communities, we do open that up. We work with all of our mutual aid towns and, and I won't say that we've had like a Rundle come over and Kenny Bunk Port come over specifically. We have a three town training group right now between Rundle and Kenny Bunk Port. We use that facility sometimes and they come there. If, if Rundle called and said, can we use it? We'd certainly be more than happy to have them. The York County EMA and the York Chiefs Association, they bring in a couple of times a year firefighters from all over our county and train them there. We're very fortunate to have that facility. We have not had a lot of wear and tear or breakage. Once in a while we'll get a donation or we'll get a company that says, what can we do for you because you use that room? We've not really looked at charging our mutual aid friends and like that. And, and oftentimes if a company comes in and puts on a program, some of our firefighters or paramedics get to attend that program for free. So that's kind of a, you know, a benefit to ourselves. But certainly, you know, we can talk some more about it, but we haven't, we haven't considered that right at the time.
Thanks.
All right. I'll move on to the lifeguards. You'll see in your handout, all of these are priority ones. That's, they're, they're important to the operation of lifeguards. The first one is the marine radios, which is, which is page 52 in your handout. We're looking to get six marine, marine frequency radios for $1,500. Those would be waterproof radios that operate on a, on a VHF channel. The fire department right now assigns lifeguards radios and they're on a UHF channel, which is a, a 400 megahertz frequency. These radios on VHF, it's like 100 to 160, and they have the post guard frequencies, the boating frequencies and things like that. So in the case of a, a water emergency, they could talk to the harbor master. I believe these radios also could be used to communicate with the police department. In the last couple of years, we've had a few incidents where if the lifeguards had these, they could have started conversation a little sooner. A lot of our command vehicles do have this frequency in them, but this would be a standalone portable for the lifeguards. Lifeguard stands is page 53. A lifeguard stands are, we have five of the stands on the beach. Right now they're made out of wood. The Public Service has built them for us many years ago. We would like to look at replacing two of these. And it may be one or two. As you know, right now the lifeguard stands are pretty stationary, particularly along Gooch's Beach. And they're really anchored to the, excuse me, the, the sea, excuse me, not the seawall, but the, the wall that, that holds the road up there. And that's because of the tide and things like that. What would be optimum if we had lifeguard stands that were light enough that we could drag them with the tide as it goes out and it, and it places the lifeguard in closer proximity to where the rescue is actually gonna happen. Right now we train to do the mad dash from the lifeguard stand, which is up by the road. And if you think a low tide, you know, it could be, let's just say a hundred yards. I don't think that's an exaggeration on some of these. So along with the, the stands getting older, they are heavier. We're, we're looking to try to find a lifeguard stand that might be made out of a lightweight aluminum and have some beach wheels on it, similar to the, to the beach wheelchairs that the rec department has. So the stand could be tipped and rolled ahead. There are some other communities, Hampton, New Hampshire, Resum, Agunkwit, retrofitted one stand on it. But I think this would really augment the, the capabilities of our guards and, and cut down on the distance that they'd have to run. This was something that was identified through hands-on training last year with our, with our lifeguards in the last couple of years. We've been doing four or five sessions on weekends where they actually go out. Last year you folks allocated money to buy a training mannequin, which we can add different weight into it, but we can take it into the water. It doesn't hurt it and simulate an actual rescue. So this year we did, I think, four weekends of training and it was identified that that's quite a run. So we looked at these lifeguard stands and that's what this project is about. The next item on the agenda is wet suits. Presently, we had some hand-me-down wet suits from the Washington Hose Fire Company dive team. That dive team is no longer there. The wet suits are old. This past season, we were nice enough to be able to borrow some wet suits from Liquid Dreams down at the beach. They loaned us life, life jacket, excuse me, wet suits for that problem. This project would, would purchase 15 wet suits that, that the lifeguards would use on a regular basis. We only hire 10 lifeguards a year. What do we do with the extra five? Well, it's all a matter of sizing. Probably the first year that we buy them, everybody's gonna get the size that fits them. The next couple of years, it's gonna get the size that, in the closet. So this is a $3,000 project. And then the next project on the list is surfboards. And that is on page 55 of your handout. This, this surfboards. Stands, no, can't find it. Anyway, this project would replace three of the rescue surfboards that we have. We own four total. One of them's very new. We bought it last year. The other three, we've had some issues getting them repaired, not being able to get them repaired. Right now I have, I'm on a list to stand by for the, the boat, the landing school to see if they have one that have some students that could do some fiberglass repair and things like that. The problem being is that they crack along the seams and they fill up with water when we get out there. So this would replace three of the boards to the same specification of the one rescue board that we have. They're not regular surfboards. They're a little beefier because they, they have the lifeguard logo and, and wording on it like that. But they're, that's what that project is. Any questions on the lifeguard stuff?
Chief Row.
Yes, sir.
What do the lifeguards do with the wet suits? First question.
Well, they, depending on the water temperature and conditions, they wear them while they're working.
So they would be, they would be in the, in the wet suit during their full shift?
I would say probably not the full shift, but they would, they would use them depending on the water temperature. You know, rarely does the water hit 68 plus. And so that's that. They certainly would be used for training. And on a daily basis, at nine o'clock, the lifeguards go and do training, whether that's a swim or whether that's a run. We're, we're looking at some other programs this summer where we're gonna require more of the in the water stuff because it is quite shocking to go into the water. And I don't mean any pun by that at all. When you're in 80 degree temperature and you're going into the 62 degree water or something, whether they'd wear them all the time. I would assume, and I apologize for not being completely informed on this, it would be like the Farmer John's where it's the major body, body portion, but I'm not, I'm not sure of that.
Okay. And just a follow-up question on that. For longevity, wet suits really have to be washed after every time that they're used in, in salt water. Do we have the facilities to support that?
We don't, I don't, I think washing, what I've seen happen is they bring them to the station and they hose them off. You know, we have a garden hose and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They just have to be rinsed, but.
My first reply was gonna be, I don't know if they can go in a washing machine or not, but.
Rinced is what I meant. So they do, we do have the ability to support that so that they last.
Yes. Yep. The fire station, they're based out of the Washington Hose Station. At the end of the day, they go up there, clean off their equipment, take care of their stuff and, you know, they would hose them off. Anything else there? The, the last item that I will talk to you about is communications. And it's a $20,000 bill and it's for the removal of microwave system hardware at town hall, the Kenny Bunk Water District, water, a couple of the water towers and Mount Hope. And that, that is hardware that is no longer in use. We've gone to hardwired communications with that. That's for both the police and the fire, probably more for the police department than the fire department. But we used to have that wave and it, it was always an alignment issue with the dishes between the different towers and the town hall and, and Mount Hope. And reliability of, of landlines has improved. And so this system is no longer used and it would be, it would be labor to remove the system.
And, and if I could just weigh in, that's more of a placeholder at this point. I have not gotten a hard number. We have not gotten a hard number yet from Southern Main Communications. So something we'll work on in the next month or so. This is relatively low priority. No one is asking us to get our equipment off of the towers, but nevertheless, it just makes sense to, to take this, the, the, the items down, the receivers down at this point. So.
We're not paying rent on any of those now, correct Joel?
Correct. We're, we are not, although.
We are taking up rentable space.
Correct. Correct. So any questions on that? Again, I'll get a, a firmer number as we go into the next couple of months.
That, that concludes my portion of the presentation this evening. If you have any questions, I'll take them or you can follow up later on. I appreciate your time.
Seeing none, we'll, we'll continue on and, and go to Brian Laverre with Public Services. He's, if you look online 37 on page 30, you'll see something that we've talked about for the past couple of years. It's a, it's the replacement of the town garage and perhaps even the transfer facility. That's been an ongoing conversation with the Board of Selectmen and something that you'll, you'll see again when we talk in, in January and in February. So I don't know, Brian, do you want to add anything to this at this point?
Yeah, I absolutely can. So basically, uh, you know, we've had a couple of workshops on this. Um, there have been ongoing conversations since, uh, you know, before my time with the town, which is a little over three years now. So we've had the facility looked at, analyzed as long as, along with programming for our department. And basically that came out to a, a new facility rehabbing what we currently have and some significant site work to the tune of about 10.2 million. That is the current estimate. We do have some wetland impact fees that would go above and beyond that. If you wanna maintain a lot of the uses on the site, i.e. the transfer station, if that wants to stay on the site, we collectively want that to remain on the site. That estimate came in at an additional $467,210, bringing the total project to, you know, rough numbers 10.7. We have 2.7 budgeted. So we're looking at an additional about $8 million for this project. That's as currently projected and forecasted. Obviously market conditions may alter that going into the future. And then if we wanted to have a facility that's a little more energy efficient with some solar and any of that, that cost would rise. So the, the base price, if you will, is about $8 million to get us to where we need to be. And then anything above and beyond that, maintain some of the uses that are on the, on the site or for any energy efficiencies down the road, we'll look at solar, any of that, geothermal, you know, that would bring that price up. We have been working with Sibago Technics on that. They've done some similar facilities and they're not too distant past. So those numbers are, are pretty good right now. Obviously COVID may adjust some of that, but that, that's pretty much the number we're looking at to get us to where we need to be with the programming that we have for our department. So again, we've had a couple of workshops on that, but if there's any questions we have right now, I can see what I can do to answer them.
I think we're ready to go forward.
Okay. Next we'll go down. So we have a tandem axle dump truck. It's replacing a 2007 wheeler that's on Cat Mouser Road or Route 99, the Plow Route. It is, it's 13 years old now, but these trucks after were awarded a budget, take about a year to take delivery. So it'll be in that 15 year mark, which is when we typically replace our heavy fleet. And I will say, uh, this, this truck is tired. It's, some pieces of it have been salvaged from DOT we bought in years past to keep the truck on the road. And it is the last standard stick shift we have remaining. So the gentleman driving that, it's not too fun getting around the cul-de-sacs and developments. So it'll be nice for this one to, to be in our rearview mirrors. So that's, that's where that one comes from. Any questions? Seeing none. Next one is a three-quarter ton pickup. This is a gas supervisor truck. The light fleet we basically replaced on a 10-year schedule. So it's, it's due to be replaced. And as it currently sits, we cannot plow with this. It's the last straight blade we have in our small fleet. We were, we were with it last year. We will not be plowing with it for this year as well. So again, it's just, it, it's due, it's tired and, and ready to go. Any questions? All right, next. This is a tractor to replacing a 2004 Kubota we have predominantly used in the parks. So we use this to do all our seeding, all our air rating, any bush hogging we have to do. This predominantly stays with the Parks and Facilities Department. We do wanna add to this one in the replacement, a cab for it and a small snow blower, which will assist around our parks and facilities, some of the tighter areas, just to get those clean after storms. So that's about a 50 to 60 horsepower machine, so a lot smaller than the backhoe the highway department uses, but it is a machine that gets used quite often by the Parks and Facilities Department. Any questions on that one? Okay. Next, it's a replacement of a 2012 lawnmower, again for the Parks Department. Currently have a 48 inch deck. We may be looking to get up into the next size, which is about a 60 inch deck. This is one of three mowers we have to maintain all the parks, fields and facilities we have through town. So it's just, it's at the end of its useful life and starting to cost us a fair amount of money to keep it, keep it operational. So it's a, it's due to be replaced. Any questions? None, we're making this easy. All right, next one, irrigation system at Holland Road. This is to replace a majority of the piping, the actual pumping and storage of water. That's all in great shape. That was upgraded a few years back. The delivery system out through the field, actually a lot of it is, it's actually foam core, Schedule 40 PVC that's buried out there. So we've been doing a lot of spot repairs. It's just, it's not the tubing that really should be in the ground. It's not rated for direct burial or pressure for that matter. It is what we have. It does function, but we have been doing a lot of spot repairs. So every spring basically and throughout the summer, we do a lot of repairs there. So this is basically to replace the delivery system out through the field. So the pumps, all the storage, the well, all that stuff will remain. This is just delivery side of things out through the field to replace again. It's a, it's a foam core Schedule 40 pipe that really shouldn't be there. So it's really just to, to catch up on that and get that to where it needs to be. Next is basically miscellaneous tools. So in our operating budget, we really don't have a budget line for tools. So it always kinda just finds a place. So we put in $15,000 to upgrade a lot of the stuff. The largest item basically is a scan tool. We have very limited diagnostics for our fleet. And now we're getting into purchasing a few hybrids, which I fully support in some departments. But in order to service these, we need my mechanics to be equipped with some scan tools that will assist in that. This scan tool will not be just for hybrids. We will equip it so it can handle the heavy fleet, the light fleet. and service all the needs in the department. Um, along with, I mean, it's a laundry list of back collect blowers, you know, uh, power brooms, leaf blowers, uh, chainsaws, uh, shovels, wheelbarrows, a laundry list of things the guys gave me. So we're looking to uh, to upgrade a lot of what we have. The only new item as a piece of this would be that scan tool. Which is something the department um, has been lacking for a number of years. Um, and it really just brings us, I mean, everything. There's a lot of you know with any of the newer vehicles, they're all computers now. So it really brings us up to that new age um, and supports that for the mechanic. So he can start diagnosing some of this stuff in lieu of sending it out to, you know, PD. A lot of times we have to send stuff to a rundle for it, cause we cannot diagnose it in-house. This will help uh, you know, be able to allow us to be able to manage some of that stuff um, in-house. Which we, we obviously prefer doing and down the road, it'll definitely save the town some money. Any questions on that one? Seeing none. Uh, next item is uh, an expansion at Lloyd Netto Park. Um, so this is basically phase one. Looking for twenty thousand dollars to support this initiative. Basically, uh, we have enough space out there abutting the blueberry plains um, to put two more adult sized ball fields. Either softball or baseball, uh, ball fields out there where there's a lot of overgrowth and everything. And we've had a lot of need, um, especially I think it was Little League softball this year, didn't have a ball field to play on. They were going elsewhere. The last couple of years, we've had some issues with scheduling conflicts um, with our fields. Um, so this is basically phase one, which will be clearing that area um, and start preparing it um, for future needs for ball fields. I haven't done a survey or analysis to see if we need softball, men's softball, girls' softball, Little League fields, soccer fields, all the above. I mean, we've had a lot of requests um, for all of those. Um, so this really would just uh, prepare that site for uh, the future needs, which are actually really today's needs. Um, so that's, that's what I'm looking for there to uh, to start that phase one of that project and clearing that and getting ready for more ball fields. Any questions?
So what happened to the ball fields over by the, the um, was it the elementary school? Wasn't there some plan to put some over there at some point?
Uh, I'm not aware of that. Um, I do know there's a lot of land there, um, that between the town and the RSU, I believe the RSU owns. So there is land there, but I'm not um, certain of any plan for the ball fields there. Um, I have heard conversations about that, uh, but no plan has ever been uh, presented in front of me on that. Okay, uh, then I have uh, GIS uh, summer intern um, for stormwater. Um, so basically uh, this past summer, we had, well, last year we budgeted some funding um, to uh, have an intern come in. He came in this past summer and did a lot of geo locating of our stormwater system. Um, so basically we have uh, very limited information on what we have, where it is, what it does, where it goes, um, any of that information. Um, so this is uh, basically hiring an intern to develop a lot of that database. I know when I started, I was told we had about eight hundred to nine hundred catch basins um, in town. And we were actually uh, have located over fourteen hundred, um, and that number is counting. So this is just all information that uh, we need moving forward, um, without getting too deep into it. Um, you know, MS four compliance with stormwater. That, that's all, in my opinion, coming down the road. It's not too far out. Um, and this is just in uh, anticipation and preparation of that coming. So this is basically just uh, going out there and locating what we have, telling us where it is, where it goes, what it's doing and um, where it is in its lifecycle. So that's, that's really what I'm looking for there. This is uh, I would call it phase two and probably a, a four-phase project, if not more. But it's something we gotta continue chipping away at, um, and you know, and locate some of our infrastructure out there. And the last item, um, and lowest on the priority list, um, I've been looking uh, looking around to assist with uh, some of the watering. And again, with some of the snow removal we have going on, uh, looking to purchase an ATV uh, predominantly to assist with the watering of the flowers and everything, um, on Main Street, West Kennybunk and Lower Village. Reason behind this, it's uh, it's twofold. Uh, we've always hired on with a, a contracted to do the maintenance piece. They always assisted with the watering. Um, unfortunately, the watering fell back on my department um, this summer. And it posed quite a few challenges. Um, you know, it is three days a week, um, bringing in staff, uh, three in the morning, runs into our day. So we had some staffing limitations due to that. Um, the reason I'm looking also for an ATV is right now it goes and we call it baby blue, but truck twenty one. Um, it actually does require a CDL to run that. So going out to bid and having an outside entity come in and assist with that, um, that road would require CDL license. Some insurance, possible, I wouldn't say complications, but some challenges there. Uh, really limits the scope of uh, who is able to assist us with those uh, duties. So this is something, uh, there are other communities that have gone to basically an ATV with a little water tank on it. Um, and then almost anybody can water. You don't have to come in at three in the morning due to traffic. You can actually ride on the sidewalk a little bit with it. Get out of the way. It's a lot smaller. Um, so it can be done during normal business hours, if you will. I think it just opens up uh, the possibilities for me hiring somebody else um, to come in and assist with uh, the watering. Like I said, it is uh, it is three days a week um, in the summer. And we, we had to bring in staff at three in the morning. Um, and it always carried into our typical day. So we're always starting our days, you know, three, three days a week. You know, short to staff members. Um, so you know, presented a few challenges. Um, so I think this uh, you know, opens a door to uh, some possibilities that we currently don't have in front of us, um, with those kind of duties that we have. So, any questions?
Does that include a tank?
Uh, that actually does not include a tank. That includes uh, a small trailer, actually, that the tank we currently have would go on. Most of the ATVs, the side by sides, uh, the most they can handle is a hundred gallon tank. We actually uh, on a typical day, go through about two thousand gallons of water. Um, so that's, it would take a lot of trips if we were to just put a hundred gallon tank. So this likely will be uh, the current tank and pump on a small trailer that would be towed behind the ATV.
And it could haul, and it could haul that much water?
Yes. Yeah, the tow, the tow, the towing ratings on the uh, so it would be a UTV. So not a, not a, it'd be UTV, one of the side by sides, you know, the John, there's John Deere, there's Kubota, some of those uh, working class ones, not a, a traditional ATV you see. Yeah, the, the towing ratings on those are uh, over three thousand pounds. So yeah, we'd be close, but yes, we just wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to top it off to the full five hundred gallons.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank you.
So. Going to page thirty one. Brian, if you could just uh, review the Waterhouse Center yet again, we've added one item on that list. You've seen the chillers, you've seen the uh, you've seen the Zamboni before. There was some discussion about uh, raising money to purchase the chillers. However, that uh, has been sidelined because of the uh, COVID nineteen pandemic. So Brian, if, if you just wanna run through that once again, uh, just get everyone uh, re-familiarized with, with our request there.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so we'll start up. Priority number one with the Waterhouse Center uh, would definitely be the chillers. Um, they are, I think tired as being very nice to them. Um, they're, they're far beyond their useful life. Um, and actually I do have an estimate right now just to turn them on. I don't have it right here in front of me. Um, but I, I know it's gonna cost us thousands of dollars just to get them to turn on and there's no promises after that. You know, I believe uh, when these went in, uh, the goal was a four or five years was kinda the statement that was put out there, that these were going to last. So we're, we're at that and beyond. Um, so we ask, are asking a lot of them, um, to try to maintain them and continue using them. It's an old R twenty two system. It's an Acme system. Um, Acme is no longer around. Um, so parts, pieces uh, don't really exist. It's really just uh, jumping the safeties um, in order to get this thing to start and run. Um, so again, that, that's definitely priority number one. Number two are stairs to service the chillers. Um, so I'm not sure if anyone's really been in that Zamboni room, if you will. But uh, basically we have a staircase that uh, cranks up with an old uh, basically a boat crank to pull a boat up on a trailer. Department of Labor um, has told us that that needs to go. Um, it is unsafe. Um, so we talked to a local fabrication shop to see if they could uh, fabricate some stairs for us on the outside of the building, um, to get us upstairs to service the chillers. So these would be on the side where the meter is, where the propane tanks are, behind the fence. So there'd be a set of stairs going up there. Basically up to a new door, um, to be a service entrance to get upstairs onto the chillers, um, and the air handlers and everything to service them. Again, that was brought forward by inspection by Department of Labor. Um, that was their recommendation. Um, so that's, that's the price to uh, do that. And then third and final, um, is the Zamboni. Um, again, that's another one that's uh, been salvaged, if you will, parts, pieces uh, put together. Um, it is operational. We do have uh, one gentleman that knows the machine very well, that has volunteered, um, basically since the facility's been open. Um, he's comfortable running it, does a great job maintaining it for us. But it is, it is tired at the end. And if uh, that gentleman should not come back to the town, um, which was the case two years ago. We experienced a lot of breakdowns, um, and that, that was down more often than it was out on the ice. So in anticipation of him possibly not coming back, um, it would be a big challenge and a big burden to the volunteers who basically make the ice for us, um, to try to keep this machine uh, that we currently have running. Um, so those are the, the three requests there.
And last but not least, uh, Brian, if you could just touch upon the auditorium seats and the Town Hall windows and then you're done.
Yep, no, absolutely. Uh, so the auditorium seats, um, this uh, again, started before my time. So it's been on the uh, in front of the budget board for, this will be the fourth year now. Um, so basically the seats up, up top of the auditorium there on the balcony, um, you know, are, are no longer, um, I guess usable. Um, so this is the uh, the budget number to uh, replace those. Should we want to uh, replace those and continue using the auditorium um, at its max capacity? Not sure what the appetite is for that. I know it with COVID, um, it's obviously lower on the priority list because we're not, you know, opening that space um, to large gatherings. But down the road, that is something, should we wanna open that auditorium back up and use it to its capacity, um, that's something that will have to be addressed. Um, and then the Town Hall windows, um, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a big number, the two hundred thousand dollars, uh, but there are a lot of the older single pane windows that are in rough shape uh, throughout the building. Some don't open. Um, some when they open, they, they don't close. There's a lot of draft through them. Um, David Boyd, our facilities supervisor, did uh, take on a project, I believe it was last year, possibly the year before. Um, and he actually made window inserts, um, to assist uh, predominantly in the winter with those drafts. Which have been great, they have worked, um, they've helped. Um, but you know, it's just uh, you know, pushing this uh, down the road a little bit more. I know we have a facility study we're undergoing right now, um, which this may be uh, brought up as a piece of that. But again, this is something that's been going on a couple of years. We've been deferring it. Um, but the, the windows throughout the building uh, are, are old, they're worn and uh, should be replaced. Um, the auditorium windows, um, those are, you know, as everyone knows, as a drive-by, those are large and they're, they're not inexpensive to replace. So that's why uh, the number you see there is where it is. Um, so yeah, that's where we are with that one.
So they're, they're, they're not causing any damage, no, there's no water leakage or that kinda thing at this point?
No, nothing drastic, no drastic. I mean, you, you've got, you know, some moisture outside the window or something, but nothing, you know, nothing pouring and nothing leaking to that extent. Anything that's broken to that, we do uh, bring uh, an outside vendor in to come and do uh, replacements and repairs as needed. No, we wouldn't let it get to that point. But no, they're, they're, they're older and due to replace, but no, no uh, significant leakage from them.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, thank you.
Thanks. Um, first off, question on Waterhouse Center, um, chillers and Zamboni. And it's not so much a nuts and bolts as a, as I guess a rationale question, Brian. I don't know whether it lands on you or, or with admin. Um, so I understand how the pandemic could disrupt the, the private fundraising process. I don't understand how uh, those purchases kind of got shifted towards, let's fund this from appropriation. If someone could explain like, why that wasn't, what, why, why it's not being recommended that we defer that until that fundraising can continue?
I think Blake had uh, made some significant inroads, um, and I had made a contact. So we had some money that had been pledged. And then COVID nineteen uh, came about. And the reason it's been shifted is because we don't know what the future of, of COVID is going to be to inhibit our fundraising. And Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think we're probably, if we were to order, we're probably four to five months out. And uh, so we're just visioning if we're still impacted by COVID and inhibiting our fundraising. That it's, it's for, before you tonight because um, it may be essential for a timing perspective. Brian, am I correct about that for timing?
Yep, Mike, uh, the last I checked, um, it was ninety days for delivery um, of the unit, once you order it. So we'd have to go to bid, award the bid, take delivery. Uh, so we're at probably four months plus before they start that project.
And on another topic, um, you know, I know that not, not everything has an ROI attached to it. But I would think that the auditorium windows, um, we could get a, a rough idea of potential energy savings that would offset those costs. Um, does that, such a thing exist?
So John, I, I don't know that we've done an actual energy audit on the building, uh, but that's something, we are doing a facility study. I am providing or retrieving some documentation, um, for some of the architects and engineers, um, as far as our energy usage. Whether they break it down as to what the windows would do or not, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But that is something uh, we could go through and get some of that data. Um, that is, that is definitely an option.
And this isn't just the auditorium, it's the entire building. Isn't that correct, Brian?
That, that is correct. This window replacement is the entire uh, building, uh, all of Town Hall. The auditorium um, is a large piece of it just because of the, the size of the windows. Um, so yeah, but no, uh, return on investment. That, that is something uh, we can try to get some data on and see, and see what we can do for you and provide for you.
Is that something that could be built into um, uh, putting this out to bid when it is put out to bid? To, to set requirements for energy efficiency uh, for the window replacement project?
Yeah, I believe we could write a bid around any of the uh, the R ratings on them. Um, the other piece is it, it is a historical uh, building. So uh, HPC would be involved, um, in either designer selection of the windows. Um, so I'm not sure what they do or do not approve, um, in regards to that. Um, but yeah, I mean, we could write a bid around, um, the R ratings or any of that on the, on the windows.
Gotcha. And to, to belabor slightly the questions about the chillers in Zamboni. When you were saying ninety days to, to purchase or four months to purchase, uh, doesn't that put us near the end of the skating season? And I'm wondering if, if you're looking at timing, um, for those, I'm curious how COVID restrictions may be restricting us opening up Waterhouse for skating. And if that's been factored into whether these are a necessary purchase uh, for this winter, this skating season or the following skating season?
Dan, um, really what the vision is, is that this, if we're approved by the voters, would be something we go out for July first preparation for the following budgets or following skating season.
Gotcha.
And wa, and Waterhouse is an opening this year anyway, right, for skating?
That's correct. We're, we're not able to open it due to COVID. And that's not to suggest, uh, also to follow up with John's question. That if this was funded, I do believe that it's uh, the intent, when Blake and I've had discussion, to continue to look to fundraise. Which could be something in an effort to pay back, if we had, what I would suggest was in advance of the dollars. I do think the donors would be willing to continue to go forward. I, I can't obviously speak and commit for them. But they had a sincere interest. So I do believe that that would be the initiative, is continue to fundraise for this.
Any other questions on that? Moving.
If I, if I may, if I may, um, I'm gonna repeat what I said last year. When the town funds those chillers and/or the Zamboni, the urgency behind fundraising diminishes. And we end up footing the bill. And this is a long ways down the road. And I realized that somebody said they should be four or five years in life. We were sold a bill of goods four or five years ago. And um, I'm not sure this is the year that we need to be addressing it.
Moving forward, um, Dan, if I could call on you to uh, talk about the, the arch printer, plotter, scanner.
Good evening. Um, we uh, purchased um, a wide format printer and plotter back in two thousand thirteen.
format printer and plotter back in 2013. Um, it served us very well in, in uh performing a lot of electronic storage um over the years. Um, generally, we, we did have um Spillers, the, the, the company that we had purchased it from originally, take a, take a look. Um, got some ideas of what kind of a life that had. It was about seven to nine years and we're great about eight. Um, it's been, it's been a workhorse, it's done very well for us, but it's starting to have some issues. Um, and what ends up happening toward the end of um the life of these uh wide format plotters uh is the maintenance contracts really get exorbitant. So you, you know, you may be looking from 10 to $15,000 for the plotter, but a- as they get a little, a little older, you start renting it to over a few thousand dollars a year for the maintenance agreement. So it's just kinda, it's, it's, it's that time. Um, we did have a portion of it budgeted for last year, but um as we came back um after the COVID breakout to review the budget, it was kind of moved off till this year, choose by um, all the departments for the most part, anybody that needs um anything scanned. And as we've really, you know, my office has really tried to move toward um electronic storage, digitization. Community development is looking to do a lot of that stuff too. Um, and it's really to minimize paper, which we've, we've done, but it also performs a lot of other functions like, you know, we do have a lot of signage. It came in, yeah, pretty handy when we had uh the workforce um re-engagement. Um, no, uh, excuse me, the workforce um opening committee had uh, had to produce some signage. So it gets, it gets its good fair uh amount of use for uh all the departments and um, we're looking for 15,000 to uh, to replace it. And there may be some savings. I did uh, uh, as usual, when I did update the um, the estimate for um for the plotter, because the original one we got was from last year. Of course, their answer was, well, we'll take another $1,200 if you want to buy it before the end of the year. Um, but that's not what we're looking to do. Uh, we're looking to uh to move on this uh for July, so we're looking for 15,000 to do the replacement. Any questions?
Seeing none, moving on to uh line 74. This was uh essentially hardware, some software, but essentially replacing 20 units of uh uh desktops. And originally, we had $30,000 in there. Uh, recently, we've been moving from lab, uh, desktops moving towards laptops. Uh, solid state drives, had uh decent, strong laptops that could uh uh be used outside of the office since we're at times moving to outside of the office as, as we go forward in, you know, during the pandemic. So uh, replacement hardware, 20 units laptops averaging around $2,000 per unit. Uh, Rich, anything you want to add on top of that? Any other hardware in that number?
Uh, right, so uh we have, we've had to restructure a little bit some of the funding for, as Joel mentioned, for uh desktop replacements. Our desktops are, most of the desktops are 2012, summer 2010 vintage. They're fairly old, a couple of 14s. So we've been replacing those because they're Windows 7, they don't support Windows 10. And Windows 7 is not supported by Microsoft with patches anymore. So we need to move up uh, uh, our desktops because they won't support the new operating system. So we've been buying those because COVID hit uh earlier this year, we ended up having to buy some laptops, which gobbled up some of the money for desktops. So this is replacing is, is, you know, we, obviously we can't go above what we allocated for this particular year. We're replacing desktops. Some are being replaced with laptops, which are more expensive. So this is money for next year to get the rest of the machines up to par so that uh we can continue moving forward with safe operating systems and uh good hardware. You can't get parts unfortunately for some of these old desktops, so um, they're, they're not repairable. They won't run uh the new software, so we have to move forward with that.
Questions on hardware? All right, we're gonna move back to uh
I was, I was a little slow on my button there.
Sure.
Um, Rich, is that uh literally hardware only for laptops or does it include um some of the applications they run?
So, right, we've had to upgrade some applications because uh the older uh software that we're running doesn't run necessarily on Windows 10. What was the example? We just had that happen to us. Um, can't remember which product it was, but it, it, it wouldn't run on 10, so. Uh, and also, I think one of the things that we're, we're looking, we're, we're looking at a lot of things, but one of the things in particular is Firehouse and going with their their uh web version, which would be hosted by them. And it's only a small increase in price, but it is an increase in price. I'm not sure, Dan, if we're looking at uh version eight for Vision yet, but we're running an older version of Vision server, so um it's, it would be, include software as well, yes. Any other questions?
I think that's it. Now we're gonna move back up to uh the, the favorite topic of the evening. Sorry, everyone. Roads and sidewalks. And so if you could just uh flip over to page 32 and I'm, I'm gonna hand it off to Chris Ostrite to run through these uh and just give us a uh I think, what do you think? About 15 minutes, Chris? And we'll just zip right through these. He smiles, he smiles.
About one minute per road.
That's right, oh.
Um, so what you have in front of you, when you look at page 32, is just a real snapshot of many of the roads we have. Um, absent is a summary, and I guess I'll give you that real quickly. We have about 115 miles of roads. Of that, about 74 of them are what we own as a town, and that's our only financial obligation. Some of the turnpike, state roads, city roads, they're under other funding sources. So sometimes when we're looking at things, what you don't see in this sheet is me looking at a percentage of where we're putting our money into our roads, and that's gonna mean something in my mind. So it's difficult, but we try to track it in terms of what percentages work we're doing a year, and that's kind of important to understand. Um, just to rewind real quickly, um, back in 2014, we started using what was called a program called Paver to manage our roads. And what it did is it looked really qualitatively how we looked at distresses in the roads, and then it rated them using an ASTM standard. So it was not, I think it's good, you think it's bad approach. Uh, we transitioned in 2018 to a um a service called Street Scan, where what they do is they actually have a vehicle that drives the road. It's very similar to how the state DOTs do that. And it catalogs all the distresses in a road, uses the same methodology and grades them. Um, what we try to do is we don't try to put all of our money into our roads that are broken. We try to blend it with roads that are worth saving. Some of the roads that are already completely deteriorated, uh, they're not gonna cost us anymore to fix them in the future, so they kind of sit on the shelf some line, sometimes until we can't ignore them anymore. Um, those are the ones, I sort of say, are future on the horizon because we know we, we're on, we're beyond borrowed time with those, but there's only a handful of those left in town. We've invested pretty well in those over the years, so. What we try to do is in our rating system, we try to stay with a pavement condition index of about 70. Um, that's above fair. Um, we do segregate it into certain areas of what we call collector roads. When you think about roads like Summer Street, Fletcher Street, Route One, where everyone drives, and then we look into some of the localized roads that are maybe your dead end streets and we balance it out. Um, because those collector roads are gonna see more wear and tear and they're gonna break down quicker. Um, the program recognizes that, so those are gonna get enhanced maintenance, a shorter maintenance cycle versus some of the ones they're gonna get stretched out longer. So it is a little bit complicated, but we do take all that into consideration. Basically, what you have in front of us, or in front of you tonight, if you look at it, is our carryover from past projects that we've um, we've been looking at in terms of forecasting out. Um, we are due to do a re-scan this year. What the scanning revealed to us is some of our projections for our maintenance cycle is um maybe a little too conservative, which is, is a good thing. Um, we would generally predict a road deteriorates about three points a year. We've seen that to be around two to two and a half. So what that means is a brand new road is gonna perform much better than an older one. And that, instead of, you know, people wonder how long a road lasts. Sometimes you can get 20 years out of a road. When you've been repaving a road multiple times, that pavement cycle may be somewhere between eight and 14. So it does vary depending how we look at it. There's no simple answer. Bottom line is, um, with the roads we see right now, looking at construction pricing, we've seen uh, we're forecasting about 1.1 million dollars worth of roads. That'll get us around three, three and a quarter miles of what I'll call road rehabilitation, a blend of paving. Um, there aren't any major reconstruction projects. Um, what we have seen with some of these reconstruction projects, not only they're super costly, now we try to blend those with the other utility work that's forecast out there, both sewer and water. Um, even though we've learned a little bit on recent experience, when they think their utilities in good shape, it isn't as good a shape as they want, and that adds cost to a project on their end and timing and all of those things factor out. Um, one thing we did do is last April, we received a request from Southern Main Planning and Development Commission. There's sort of the Regional Growth Council. There was anticipation that there could be a future stimulus bill, so we really looked at a lot of these projects that um, the public has expressed an interest in seeing, maybe not paying for, but seeing. And we looked at getting a sidewalk all the way down to the beach. We looked at a sidewalk along Western Avenue and basically found about $7 million worth of projects that we'd love to have done if somebody else gave us the money. So those are what we call future projects as well. In this sheet you're looking at, there's kind of three rows. The first ones are ones that should be done. Those are roads where we're doing work in that area and it makes sense for us to finish things up before we get out of that area and don't come back for a while. We've invested very heavily in the Longview Terrace subdivision neighborhood, meaning Woodhaven Drive, Merrifield Drive, Longview Terrace. Barnard, there's a few remnant fill-ins. We would like to finish those out and then, you know, um, not lose sight of other areas that we need to transition to. That middle grouping of projects, those are projects that have been in the topic of budget conversation the last couple of years. Um, one of them being the phase three of the downtown. It was always part of the few, the master plan and the vision. Um, and it's always an emphasis and consideration, certainly when the traffic signals in the Fletcher Main, Portland Road area need to be redone, then it's the time to kind of do that project. It's always good to keep it on the mind. So we, I'm kind of put that in the future horizon category. Same thing with the Seerode sidewalk. I know that was not approved by the voters last year. There was an interest in it. I think for us, we keep it on the radar screen because if DOT were to fund a project or to go down that road, it takes on a different meaning. So we want, we want to keep it in the focus of the conversation, knowing where potential commitments are. Um, as we move to that last group, capital paving, those are projects where they, I kind of call them the one day projects. That's where they show up and they should be able to kind of get in and out and pave for the group of the day. Um, that's a relatively small amount of the work we have to do in terms of the major projects. That's just over well, probably 80% of what we're doing. So it's a nice little mix of stuff we have going on. Um, if you were to look at where we're at, I think people want to know that question, are we doing enough? Uh, I would say we're doing the right amount. We're, we're, we're not exceeding expectations. Um, we invested pretty heavily last few years. Where we put our money is in some of the higher travel roads. So our current pavement condition index is around 77, which means we're doing pretty well. Um, I don't think we're in that position where we can take a year off because what happens is we're catching a lot of these roads before they fall off the edge. So we are doing, I think, a little bit less. We have seen prices really escalating. Um, both in terms of where the cost is and the ability to get projects done. I don't see that changing in years ahead. Both the escalation and the ability to get work done. So those are things we're balancing out. Um, we do get to take a little bit of credit for some of the work that the state does. Last year, DOT came in and paved between the library and the roundabout. Um, great that they did that, highly traveled road right in town. Technically, that is a state road, so that's really what we want them to do. In the last several years, we have um pursued what we'll call MPI projects. That's a 50/50 match where the state pays half, we pay half. And it accelerates their interest in doing projects like Ross Road that technically we own, but it's a state aid road, so they have an interest in doing. We still have those on the horizon to finish up Fletcher Street, where the water district just did their work. We will tackle that in the spring and then do Rosswood as well. So there's other work that's still in the books that we have to kind of wrap up to get to where we are, which is why um, I don't think we're light in terms of what we're projecting, but we're certainly not probably going overboard, so. I can keep going, but I don't know that anybody wants to listen to me too much longer. I don't, certainly don't mind uh answering any questions or filling in some blanks. I know there's some new members and I hope I gave a clue as how we are focused looking at these things. No one.
Chris, half, half, yeah, sorry, new guy.
Joel was gonna give me 10 bucks if there were no questions.
Promise me 20 if I'd asked one. Half the budget here is phase three of downtown, and I did step away for a minute, so apologies if that's what I missed.
Okay, sure.
But what, what are the details here?
Yep, so that actually is, shifts all the way to the right column called Future Horizon. When the downtown project was envisioned, I think back in 2009, eight, nine, we did the first two phases. The last phase was to tend to take that theme of improvements and wrap them up around Town Hall, Police Station, Library, that whole area. Incorporate the paper sidewalks, the new curbing, some new geometric improvements. The traffic signals you see outside Town Hall, those are from 1992 era. Um, they are definitely likely to need uh enhancements. We're not seeing a lot of problems with operations, but they're old. Um, I'm just saying, that's not a project in this year's budget, but somewhere probably in that next five-year window, um, it's something to be thinking about. Um, if we were to do it, that includes the cost of complete re-signalization as well. So if we were gonna redo that work, we would look at the geometry as well. That, that $650,000, while it shows up in that column, it moves all the way to the right. So that's not included in that $1 million.
I see.
I probably could have shortened my response, but okay.
Chris, can you help me out? I am positively giddy that there is money for my road. Um, can you give me a brief on the difference between shim and overlay reclaim? I used to know more about this, but it's gone.
Okay, um, so while everybody was going through all the other items, I kind of broke down a few things in my spreadsheet and probably when we get to budget, you'll see what some of this means, but uh there's really three basic things when we handle our roads. We, we do what we call light paving and whether we put down, say, an inch or two inches, which is more of a structural paving. So on some roads, what we've been very fortunate is, is if we can keep it where we can just shim it, where we level it, that's like the first quote, we come down real thin, we re-level it so that we can put another inch on it and put a nice solid surface on it. That's what they just did uh on a project this past summer that DOT did in June, between the library and the roundabout. They came in one day, they kind of filled in all the ruts with the shim and they went over it with a nice paving machine and finished it up. That's the ideal way to do things. Uh, the other circumstance we get into is what we call rehabilitation, where we end up chewing up the whole road. We reclaim it and then you're basically prepping that surface and putting two new lifts on it, but you're really kind of starting almost halfway over, but not completely. And then the worst case is what we call a full reconstruction. That's what we did with Dane Street. When the sewer came in and dug through the entire street and we dug up all the drainage, there's really nothing left. We sort of finished it all out, so you end up going all the way back to the beginning. When we do those projects, that's what we want to avoid. So when you see Rosewood Circle shifted all the way out to that right-hand column, there's really nothing um to, to try to rehabilitate without starting all the way over. Those roads tend to be about hmm more than a million dollars a mile. Just, that's not even adding sidewalks and those kind of things. So that's the worst case, you know, you want to stay away from. In the ideal situation, when we can just do an overlay, if we can come in, um sort of those lower columns, we're just gonna show up those one-day projects, we can do about hmm, a mile for about $100,000. So there's, you know, about a tenth of the cost, depending how we approach doing our projects. So we really want to try to focus on the sweet spots that way. On Old Falls Road, um the majority of it, one of the things that Street Scan shows us is it breaks roads like that into segments. So when you look at it, it says the road's 5,700 feet long. That's, those are tough roads. It's hard to, I can't really do a piece of that. You really have to do it all because it doesn't invite a logical intersection. Um, the treatment scheme is pretty much the same. Uh, in that area, what we would be doing is we would try to, we're gonna have to do some shoulder improvements because those edges are breaking up. So, yeah, the majority of the work, when you look at it though, is primarily gonna be a structural overlay. So we'll fix up the shoulders, both in terms of those edges. Then we'll probably come in and polish him and then we'll come in and do a real thick lift of it because that roads get pretty decent carrying capacity. That's the majority of how it's getting categorized. There's still drainage work that we have to do. There's really none out there. So um, it doesn't elevate itself to where I call it a rehabilitation project, so we're not gonna reclaim the entire road. If we were to get into that situation, that project um would almost double in price.
Yeah.
And that's a tricky thing. One of the things we try to balance out is we do, we have our database where we scan it. DOT maintains a database of all their roads and we try to look at the traffic. That road, I think, is, it's got a projected traffic of about 2,000, 2,200 cars a day. Seems like it's a lot more than that. So, you know, we try to weigh those pieces out.
It's heavy trucks, so.
Yeah, it does, absolutely. And I think that's one of those things. Yeah, it does, absolutely. And I think that's one of those things where there will be some stretches that we have to do a few different things.
Because whether, yep, if you think of going into Sanford, we're the shortcut.
Yes.
So they get off the pike and they come up this way. So all your eighteen-wheelers going to Shaw's and all of there. So last year in the budget cycle, we were ten years out and we were only projected for crack sale. So what happened in the last year that all of a sudden we're like top of the list?
Well, so we used to, I think when we use, what we try to do is we're, we're in that transition phase. So when I talked about having done it in two thousand fourteen, every road got a placeholder for crack sealed, even if they're way into the future.
Okay.
Okay, so we probably didn't do the right amount of explanation for why your road wasn't getting the right, I don't want to call it your road, you know, Old Falls Road wasn't getting the right amount of attention.
It's my road.
Okay, well, we'll take contributions. So certainly it's all of our roads. What it looks like though is any, any, the sometimes, you know, the, the analysis is based on what it can see. What we also do and why we do is kind of a rescan every three years is they don't always perform the same way. When you, just what you said, the truck traffic, that, that breaks down a road differently. And a heavier volume truck, even at two thousand cars a day, is going to be a lot different than some of these ones that might see thirty thousand cars a day of light vehicular traffic. So Old Falls has continued to deteriorate. We really have to sometimes accelerate roads or it's going to get to that million dollars a mile type of project. And, and this is what we're doing. We're recognizing that.
Do you know when we're going to address drainage?
We will address drainage as part of this. Some of it, I'm going to be honest with you. Because that area is so flat, some of our challenges, I mean, the drain is sort of goes off and sits. The best we can do is try to make it sit a little further away from the road. Because there's not a lot of topography there and, you know, it's, uh, it's, it's good and it's bad. It, it doesn't give us so many options as we want, but we have to move it away so it doesn't get right back in that road bed. When it sits very close to the road, that's when it eats at it. And so we're going to enhance it as best we can, but we can't fix it too much.
And that's why I asked, because my driveway actually ends up being a lake. And when you drive through it and you actually have a wake to it. And that's where the sides have very, very quickly deteriorated between my house and Portage, which was completely just redone this summer. But last winter, they had to have like an emergency backhoe come up here and dig out because the road was flooded over. So I just didn't know where down the road that was.
Yeah, so that's one of those things that, believe it or not, we try to pay a lot of attention to when we do blend those things in. If this were a straight overlay project and I want to be real careful about that, it's, it's more than a shim and an overlay. It's, it's got some more to it. We recognize when you elevate that road surface, because that is what's going to happen to provide that additional strength, we've got to blend in those driveways. And if we just try to blend it in in two feet, not only do people have problems turning in, but we do create that lake. So those are some, a lot of those challenges we're going to have to try to navigate things through there. And we may have to cut and fix some of them for those very reasons, but.
That's okay. We'll just hold off on paving the driveway another year. No.
That, that actually is a, that is a really good idea and that's something that's tricky for us is hopefully, you know, I want to be careful about advertising where we want to do projects and making it feel like it's, it's going to happen. But anytime we can alert people that are on the radar screen coming up in that near future, they can make the proper or defer some of these things because you're right, if we can blend those things, they work a lot better.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So Chris, you've had a couple of years to get used to the, the street scan and a certain philosophy of, of road maintenance and reconstruction. Going forward, based on that, would you anticipate that these are about the kinds of annual numbers that we're looking forward in, in coming years on, on a rolling basis? Or do you feel like decision-making is, is being done kind of with a annual cap in mind? I'm, I'm just asking for, it's a little bit of a crystal ball gaze here.
Yep, good question. So something I can do is I can visually bring it up and show everybody what it looks like on the screen. And when you see it on the screen, you see our road network, red is bad. There's a reason to make it red, right? It always scares you. We have, I think I just computed it less than thirty-five hundred feet of red. Okay, so if we can pace those reds out, if we can get over that hump, unfortunately, a dollar amounts a difficult type of thing. What I was trying to do, some calculations, if, if we can continue to be focusing on that, I'm going to call it, the target would be about four and a half miles a year. That would be ideal, four to five miles a year in doing it more in a paving mix. Recognizing something going to be a blended reclaim, then I'm working it out. You're not going to be a hundred thousand dollars a mile. You're not going to be a million. I, I think that million dollars is a pretty good number. It would be nice if we can get down to about eight. Some years is going to bump to one point two, but that number seems to truth itself out. In the perfect world, it, when we can get our roads so they don't become a roller coaster and we're on a maintenance cycle, then I think you can see a lot of continuity. I think you're going to see that continuity, I would probably guess in about maybe six or seven years. And the reason I say that is some of these ones, we get to pick away from, that is only so long we can tell everybody on Rosewood Circle that project is okay. There's nothing to see here when last year, we, Public Services had to go and sort of rebuild about a hundred feet of road because it did break up. And, and a few of those, there's two or three of those we have to get away. Some of them are very short, so it's not a big deal, but that, Rosewood and Longwood are two real challenging roads and, you know, we want to kind of pace those out in the lineup. Other than that, what we have seen, believe it or not, we spent ninety thousand dollars on Ross Road a couple of years ago because we were so concerned it wasn't going to hold on until we got the MPI money from the state. We've already budgeted that and we're going to execute that project and it's actually behaving pretty well. We can't wait much longer. The state needs to spend the money, but I, I think we're definitely approaching a continuity point where, no, nobody's ever said to me, you can't have that money to do it because guess what? You, you can't hide from the roads being where they need to be. The reality is probably what's hidden in it, and if we use the term infrastructure, our sidewalks are probably things where there's going to be more interest from people to invest in sidewalks. And that's going to be a little bit of a challenge if it doesn't blend into another project. I think you saw that on Seerode last year where there was a reasonable interest in a legitimate, had it been built some time ago, but I think in terms of roads, where we're going, it would be nice to be looking at a range, you know, again, assuming the dollars stayed the same, they're not going to, they are going up. We have been very fortunate to be renewing and carrying our paving price. It only adjusts for an escalation on the Batuman for paving. I think we're discussing whether we go out to bid or not, what we saw for paving prices at most municipalities in the area we're seeing is probably about eight or nine percent higher than we've seen. So I would say if you were just fixing on, you know, two thousand twenty dollars, that million dollars a year is a, is a pretty good number. At, at a, you know, probably plus or minus seven percent each year either side. Anything bigger than that, I think we would try to blend with something else and see some cost efficiencies through grants or other things like that, but, yeah.
Any other questions at this point? No, uh, Bill?
Yeah, hey Chris, quick, quick question. You mentioned thirty-two hundred. I thought it was miles, I guess, a road that you said had the, that were red. If, if you, if you look at that and distill that out of the ones that you would, I remember last year in a conversation you and I had, you were part of your prioritization process had to do with how busy the roads were, or do I remember that wrong?
Nope, you're exactly right. So a good example of one, and I don't mind talking about it because it's on your list, Greenfield Drive.
Yep.
The Greenfield Drive is a little short connector right between the loop of Merrifield. When we bid that project this year, that was an alternate, we knew we were tight for budget. Because budget was so tight, we weren't able to incorporate it into the project. That's a red. It basically serves five homes and it's, you know, well, I can see it right here. It's five hundred feet long. So, I mean, that's one of those ones that it makes sense because to leave that in that condition and walk away is a tough thing, but that's some of those reds. A lot of our reds, with the exception of it, the reason they're red is they're mostly dead-end streets or they only serve local traffic. That's, I think, the reason why the town has been able to survive allowing those roads to get that much of deterioration because most people are pretty vocal about it. So, yeah, we're, we're.
The number of reds that are actually higher traffic and you must have some means of being able to distinguish between low traffic, like the one that does five houses.
Yep.
A higher traffic, which would be a road that would connect to Route One, let's say. You must have some way to distinguish that or in your priority list.
Yep, absolutely. So visually, if I were to bring it up on the screen, I can look at it in groupings and it will filter out so you can see by color and by range where your performance is. One of the things that strategically, we've really tried to do and I, I think at this point next year, we should feel really good about it, is we really focused a lot of those dollars where most people drive. If we were to allow Seerode to just fall apart or Fletcher Street, you can tell is in, is in really difficult shape. At this point, when we rehabilitate it next year, so many people use that, that where they're seeing the value with their dollars. Sometimes those side streets get deferred a little bit longer. But I think we're balancing it out with where the volume of traffic is. And the good news is, is our higher traffic roads, they see all the traffic when we see that. Those are performing well and they are, they aren't getting a position where they're breaking down quicker either. So the town's done a good job investing in it. What you will see, we, I'm going to say Alfred Road is getting to that point where, you know, it's now starting to delimit, where we're getting very close to needing to do that. That is a portion of a state aid road. It does eat truck traffic. We can't wait too many more years for that because then it's going to start to deteriorate quickly.
Is Alfred a red at this time?
No, nope.
And that section of Fletcher that you mentioned, is that a red at this time?
Nope, no. So basically for something to be red, you won't feel comfortable driving in it. Okay, it's going to be severely rutted. When it rains, there's probably going to be puddles in the street. Or even when somebody digs in the street and there's a bad trench, it's over a long portion of that stretch. So isolated repairs, because of the one of the things that Street Scan does is it recognizes changes in the road and it factors out, it's a weighted average. So I don't want to, I don't want to publicly identify all the reds or I'm sort of putting a noose around my neck, but you would know it, really. And we're pretty in tune with that and realistically, the thing that's hard about a red is it's hard to maintain. So those are the ones when Brian's guys are going out and plowing and it's hard to get down the pavement because it's so irregular and so uneven. And that's where they have to kind of refocus reference in different ways. So we don't really have them.
So it's not just the paving on those red roads, it's the road base underneath it?
Yes, that's really why it becomes red. You know, the pavement is, it, it's, it's kind of like your roof, right? Your pavement or your shingles, but you've got your underlayers that are really supporting the rest of it. And when they break down, it doesn't matter what's on top of it. That's what, that's why something gets to red. The, the base beneath it is no longer held intact and it hasn't drained well and you can't really bring that back. That's the challenge.
I have one other question for you and it, it goes to trends and pricing of, of paving. Two thousand thirteen, when, when my heating oil, it was almost three ninety-nine a gallon, they, the price of, the price of paving suddenly shot up because after all, paving is a lot of oil.
Yep.
And the, the price of oil has been pretty steadily dropping over the last few years. Has, has our pacing, has, has our paving prices stayed or maintained fairly flat or is there an upward or downward trajectory?
Yeah, so something that happened, I think it was about two thousand twelve or thirteen. So just to describe paving real simply, think about, take a bunch of rocks and pour a bunch of oil on it. And that's about as simplistic as I can make it. The Batuman that makes it up, that's the binding agent, that tends to be about five and a half to six percent. So what the state recognizes when paving prices shot through the roof because oil went way up a number of years ago, what they did is they changed their strategy so that when you bid on it, they put, put in escalator clause. So as the price of oil went up, only that fractional percentage increases. So unfortunately, even though oil goes down, that fractional increase doesn't go down too much. What you recognize is we get a price per ton and that's loaded out. So that's all the making of the pavement, the placing of the pavement, the traffic control, everything else. So what we've been very fortunate is, is because we renewed our paving contract, we've been getting a very favorable tonnage price the number of years when we go out to bid. I don't think we're going to be as favorable. We've been a very reliable client. Unfortunately, that comes at a cost and what I mean by that is we tend to be a lower priority because we get such a great price. A year ago, when the economy was on fire, they would rather pave a private lot for a hundred and forty dollars a ton than pave us for seventy-two. And it's hard to argue with that. So those are those things we try to balance out, but sometimes it's worth making some people more patient in our process. So.
We get a better, we get a better deal, but we got a harder time getting them to actually do the work.
Yeah, that, though, that right there is very important. The other thing that's important is the time we get our money. When the voters approve things in June and we really don't have that money in hand until July, I think I've said this a number of times. We're pretty thick into the paving season and it's, this, it kind of comes in two real cycles. About three weeks ago, actually, you know, paving is really, really winding down. It's still happening, but this is like when everybody's just, their eyes are blood shocked because they haven't slept in weeks because they're trying to wrap up all the things that have, they've lost time on through rain and that type of thing throughout the year. So that's a challenge we always have is unless we were to forecast out a year ahead, trying to get into a favorable position. But quite honestly, if you look at the amount of work that we do, that we get done, even though it tends to be slower than maybe we'd like, we're getting good value for it and it's probably worth it because we know what we're getting for a product and it's holding up.
I'm going to jump in here at this point because I'm, I'm afraid Bob and Dan, there's going to be a quiz on paving later. So just get ready for that if you would. That'd be great. Anyway, I'm going to jump in. I think we need to move forward. Keep going on this because we're now running up to eight-thirty or so.
And I don't want to.
What's that?
You said I had till nine.
No.
Oh, that was everyone else. All right, I'm sorry.
So I still want to talk about bonds, but I, what I want to do is, is just say that what you, what we've looked at, what we've talked about so far is three point five million in, in capital projects. That's substantially higher than what we've done in past years. And again, this is the process. We, we, we put out these needs and then we we take the nuanced feedback that we've, we've gotten from you budget board and we refine these down a little bit further and, and really, and then next step is to determine how we're going to fund all of this debt service or general fund balance, that type of thing. So again, this is a process and, and so part of that process is just refreshing all of you as to our, our debt load at this point and what it's going to be as we issue more bonds going forward. So I'm going to direct you back to page, page twenty-one in your, in the first PDF that I sent out last night. And that's basically, that's an email to myself and I send it to myself periodically just so I remember what's, what's going on. Getting up there in age and so things come into my brain and they fall out. So like, again, I send myself texts and email and voicemail. Be that as it may, you can see on that page twenty-one of what we have still outstanding with respect to debt. And I've listed out bonds from twenty-ten that are going to be, what we call refinanced or refunded. Still looking at, at going out to the bond market in the next couple of months. I've dragged my feet a little bit on that for a number of reasons, but bond rates are still low. So twenty-ten bonds, two million. Twenty-thirteen, still one point eight million, twenty-sixteen, one point four million. And then the last go-around, twenty-eighteen, we basically three point four million for a total of almost eight point seven million dollars in outstanding debt as of right now. That is relatively low if you look at our numbers and compare it to other towns and other communities. We still have a triple-A bond rating with respect to S and P and we still have a a double-A one when it comes to Moody's. However, both of those are always subject to change as we go forward and especially as we issue more debt going forward. The amounts that are still authorized and yet we have not issued yet, you can see the next group now. June twenty-seventeen, that's the town garage that we got authorization for, two point seven that Brian mentioned earlier. June twenty-eighteen, almost two point eight. June twenty-nineteen, that's Merrifield and Barnard. June 2019, that's Merrifield and Bonard, about a million dollars there. And so total authorized 6.4, and that's from 17, 18, and 19. Now you've got the Town Garage, which we're still talking about. We mentioned that before. And Brian mentioned a price tag on that about, I'm gonna round up to about 11 million, if not a little more. So taking that all the way down to the bottom, last July, July 14 vote, we got another 2.8 million authorized. So total to be issued is another eight point, I'm gonna round up, 8.7 million. So all in all, if we issue, when we issue, or we have it all outstanding, you're looking at roughly 15.3 million dollars in debt. Again, relatively small, but still nonetheless creeping up. And I don't wanna say creeping, it's, it's increasing substantially. Now compare that to what we just saw, or what we just talked about with respect to roads and all the heavy equipment. How are we going to fund that? And that's part of my job over the next 45 days, next 60 days. So that when we come back in, in January, and again in February, we'll have a better idea of how we're going to, what we're going to buy, as well as how we're gonna buy it. So just wanted to review that. I've also given you on pages 22, you can see the, the, what's known as the financial statement that was displayed for the July 14 vote. You'll notice that I've crossed out the article that pertained to the Sea Road sidewalk. 426,000 that failed in the July 14 vote. And then you can see on page 24 what we're looking at for projected debt service for the next, for this coming year as well, as well as for the next several years. Now, John, I remember in our, one of our meetings, whether it was April or in February last year, you asked whether I could pull a rabbit out of the hat and get the $700,000 increase funded. And I said, no, there's no rabbit. We're just gonna have to fight the board to figure this one out for fiscal year 21, 22. So just wanna reiterate that again. Just keep that in the forefront of your mind as we go forward. It's gonna be quite, quite a hefty increase. And again, that's one of the reasons why we increased the LV1 limit ahead of schedule, if you will, because I knew these were coming forward. I've also given you the gory detail with respect to the bond payments and all the activity on pages 25 and 26. And again, you can see all of our debt service schedule on page 27 of, of the handout as well. So any questions with respect to our bonded indebtedness, as we like to call it? A lot of numbers, a lot of information.
Not a question, but a comment. I think we need to bear in mind that a lot of these financing needs are recurring on, you know, various different cycles. And in addition, I'm assuming everyone does a little online shopping. We have two major capital projects. One being Town Garage, which was not reflected in the, the full cost of the Town Garage, not reflected in the numbers you went over, Joel. And also apparently something at 15 Portland Road in the shopping cart. So, you know, I, I, I think we need to keep some awareness of that as we move through this budget cycle and hopefully do some even longer term projection on our capital needs as is really the responsibility of this board.
Well, I think you, John, if I could, I think you've mentioned it before. What's, what's our ongoing need for roads? And a million, billion two, million three seem to be something that Chris mentioned. When you look at the heavy equipment, trucks aren't getting cheaper. The, the additional equipment that public services requires not getting any less expensive. Police cars, you've seen that. It's almost as if we really should move $100,000 or 110 into our operating budget for police cars because typically we replace two a year. One some years, two others. So again, it's almost as if some of these things move, should move from almost a capital budget into a, an operating capital budget. Strange word, but nevertheless, just a recurring, a recurring process. And that's, that's, if we were just to increase our budget a million dollars, and what's my, what's my rule of thumb? Roughly four cents for 100,000? So you're looking at 40 cents added on to the mill rate, current mill rate of 14, 15. So you're looking at, at jumping up to 14, 55 just to build in another million dollars in our operating budget. So again, food for thought. Again, Dan and Bob, I, anytime you wanna go over some of the information that's available from previous years, I'd be happy to meet with you. Of course, we'd be at least six feet apart or, or something of that nature. So nevertheless, be happy to meet with you. And, and any of you, if you wanna go through what we've talked about in past years as a refresher. So any other questions with respect to bonds and capital? I think at this point, Debbie, perhaps we should, we could move to Article 7. And if, and if I could also add, just for the new members, this is more of an informational meeting at this point. The only thing that's essentially decided upon were the election of the officers. Don't vote for, for anything going forward unless you wanted to bring forth a motion. But typically, this is just a informational meeting. So Debbie, anything else that I should talk about or we should discuss at this point? You're muted. Deb, you're muted.
Oh, see, I don't, I'm not used to this stuff. Dogs laugh at my faces. The only thing that I can think, that we didn't discuss is normal protocol and like behavior. So we wanna do a procedure next time if we're gonna lay out the order of things, more so when we start meeting with a select board.
Well, you've also got, if, if I could, on, on the agenda, Article 7. That was something that was requested by John to, to be added and standard of conduct, and that is included on the, the agenda itself. So
Yeah, Debbie, if you'd like, I, I could say a few words.
Yep, I just, I didn't even see it on there. It's too small for me to read, honestly.
Right. So everybody got the code of conduct from the committee handbook with their agenda. Thank you, Joel, for, for sending that out. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to look it over. If not, I, I think everyone needs to, to take a read. We've talked a lot about what we need to do. This relates to how we do it. And it, it's really important to me what it boils down to is the phrase that I learned up at the Portland Press Herald editorial board is let's be tough on ideas and gentle on people. So just to be super specific, if you boil down this code of conduct, let me, let me pick on my imaginary board friend Steve. Hopefully, there isn't a Steve out there watching. If they are, Steve, I'm not talking to you. Here's, here's what's okay. Steve, I disagree with your idea. Even, I think, Steve, I think your idea is dumb because it doesn't take into account the blah blah that we have to deal with. Here's what's not okay. Steve, you're dumb. Steve, you're always showing up here with your dumb ideas. I, I think this would be obvious, but it doesn't seem that all of the board members have gotten this. Flamethrower emails to the, to the entire board. Facebook postings blaming individual board members for decisions of the board are completely not acceptable. And there's some good reasons why. First off, we're never gonna get people to serve on this board, especially young people if that's the climate that's created. Second off, it, it really interferes with the functioning of our government. Over the last three years, I had the, the privilege of having a front row seat to the school board where actual illegal activities were defended by a campaign of bullying. And I'm not gonna tolerate it on my board. So, you know, please take a look, familiarize yourself and follow it. Thank you.
Debbie, if you're, when you're ready, there's a hand raise from an attendee, Rachel. Rachel, if you'd like to come in.
Hey, thanks. Everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanna say, John did not want me to come to this meeting and say this, but we are two very different people. And I said, I don't care if you want me to or not, I'm coming to this meeting to say this. There's a little bit of a history here. I have, I, I emailed Tom Wellman, your, your, your most recent chair, when the email from Richard Warren, which if anybody wants a refresher, I have it up on my screen. If you allow me to screen share, I can pull up that email if anybody wants to see it again. It was outrageous. It was inflammatory. It was rude. It was personal. I could go on and on. I don't think I need to if anybody here, if, oh, I know you already because it was addressed to all of you. I asked Tom to respond to that. I didn't get any response back from him, so I called him about a month later. I have all this up on my screen if anybody wants to do the, to screen share. And Tom said he hadn't really had a chance to see those emails, Richards or mine, but that he would get, he would look at them, get back to me, and then of course he would make a statement to the board as the chair of the budget board. That never happened. That was in September, I believe. So we are two months out from that, when your chair did not make a response to this board. Neither did any of the board members. I know some of the board members weren't there at the time, but none of the board members who were there at the time bothered to make a response to say that's inappropriate and unacceptable. I, I find it, I find it stunning actually that this, that this board, which represents our town and has a code of conduct and a code of ethics, was so negligent of, of all of that and responding to it. And it wasn't just the actor who wrote that email, that email, several emails, but the entire rest of the board for not responding. And your chair, who with three direct requests to make a response and to talk about the standards of this board, never responded to me or to this board. I find that inexcusable. And I hope it never happens again. Thank you, Deb. I'm glad you're chair of this, of this board now. I'm gonna tell a quick story. I know we've all been this, been in a long time, but I think it's instructive. And, and Tom was there at the time, so I think he might remember that. I think a few people on, on this call might have been there at the time. Many of you weren't. I was elected as on the Board of Selectmen, it was called at the time, the Select Board. I was the second woman in the history of Kenny Bunk to serve on the Select Board, Dorothy Stevens being the first. A few, a couple of years into my service, we had the issue of buying the post office and making it into, renovating it to the police station. That probably seems like a long time ago to some of you, but there I was, sat in the, in the Selectmen's seat during that process. And we had a workshop session, a workshop session, not a staff board meeting, a workshop session where we were talking about aspects of renovating the police station. And I said at one point, we were talking about, rather than building walls, using partitions. And I said, and this is a quote because the transcript, we, we, it was transcribed, I said, we can't use partitions down there. It's only common sense. It's only common sense. Two members of the public that were there, I'll name them, Ed Gagan, Mel Mucinic, if you wanna look it up, you can, you can find this, were so outraged, outraged that I had said that something was only common sense, that they required the Board of Selectmen to write a letter of apology to them. Which the board did, which the board did. A letter of apology for my saying we can't use partitions in the police department. It's only common sense. I would like you to look at that statement and the email that Dick Warren sent around about John. If you need a reminder, I'll send it out again, or I can screen share. I'm not gonna ask for an apology because I think that's silly and it's John's business anyway. But to, to look at where we have gone and how low the bar has gotten and the gender issues here, I think are pretty outrageous. And I really hope that that conduct stops and I'm gonna call you out on it if it doesn't. And I'm really disappointed, Tom, that you never got back to me and you never got to the board. It's inexcusable.
So I, I I'm, I'm not sure what, what this is the forum to, to say this, so I'm, I'm just going to sign off. I, I have my way of dealing with things. This is not my way of dealing with things. So I respect your opinion, going by the standard of conduct. But I see no reason that if John doesn't have the, the wherewithal to address them himself, I'm not quite sure why you're on the call addressing it. So I am going to leave the meeting.
Because I don't wanna see my town government run in this way. Because I don't wanna see my town government run in this way. That's why.
Deb, I don't see any other hands raised from attendees.
Anybody else have anything else that they wanna discuss tonight? No? Saying none? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn at 8:46.
Second?
All in favor, we will do roll call. John?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dick? I didn't say him. Did you say yes?
We didn't have a response.
And I'll be, yes.
Okay. We'll record that. So with that, we'll, we'll conclude our meeting and I thank you all for your participation and look forward to seeing you all again soon. And Joel, thank you and to all the division directors.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night all.